Okay, let's call a little later. And we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Gina's gonna start us out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Jefferson?
Here.
Ms. Shoska?
Here.
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 Ms. Towns?
Here.
Ms. Salem?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here. Okay, this is time we're gonna do some visitor statements. I'm gonna read our little section here and then we've got a number of statements, which is awesome. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such requests should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. Okay. Do we have a list of who's going first somewhere? Hector, you help us.
First time attending a board meeting, first time speaking at a board meeting.
Welcome.
So my name is Nella Gonzalez. I've had three children already graduate from RB. I have a sophomore student. My concern is how the school is going to look in the upcoming fall. My thing is, I, with the temperature checks, I expect to have a full day. I saw, I answered the survey, all that, but I expect as a parent and as a taxpayer to see a full day. This whole school, this temperature check, this mask mandate, under the Illinois School Code, Section 27-8.1, it is only, who's gonna, I wanna know, and I hope, I know you can't answer these questions right now, who's gonna conduct these temperature checks? Because under that code, only physicians, licensed practicing registered nurses can only, they're the only ones allowed. So I'm trying to figure out, how many of those are you gonna have during the arrival time to have that done? And it's also, I spoke to an attorney, because this is really getting to the point where this is ridiculous. It, according to him, it is his belief that unless the student is showing sometime, some type of illness, it is not up to the school to just randomly check students. And, one more thing, because I gotta, I'm very upset by this whole thing. Under the Potts and Brain, the laws, when Potts and Brain in 1897, I wanna believe, it, they ruled that it is, the governor's administrative agencies cannot set rules for the schools. It is not up to them. This would have to be done by our legislator. Our legislator has not convened and set laws in place. So my thing is of right now, I wanna know, if a child walks into your building without a mask, how is that child gonna be, is that child gonna be disciplined? How is that gonna be handled? Because I'm telling you right now, I was looking at a school to transfer her out, but I'm not. So I'm, right now, at this point, I will be sending her to school without a mask. So I wanna know what's gonna be done, because I need to know how to prepare myself in order to seek legal counsel. I am not gonna stand for this, the spread, you go look in Riverside, you go look throughout the community, these kids are engaging, they're, they're being kids. They're together, they're not social distancing, they're having a great time. My kids, when the first, when the lockdown happened, tell me how much more time, please, when it happened, my kids were having a mental breakdown. I left this state, it was difficult. My daughter was waking up with nightmares. I refuse to allow this to continue. We're hurting our kids, we need to stop this. We need to be their voice. And I will not lay down, and I will not stand by while I let this governor threaten, bully the school districts, there's other school districts that have filed lawsuits against him. He is doing this single-handedly without the legislator. And I'm telling you right now, I am sending my child to school without a mask. She's, this is nothing, this is useless. I have two daughters in the medical field, I'm telling you, it's a false sense of security.
Thanks, Nella, 15 seconds if you wanted to do a closing statement.
I'm done. Thank you for listening, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm very passionate, like I said, I've never been to a school board meeting, I've never spoken, but at this point, I'm at the point where I just wanna cry for our kids, not only mine, but our children. They're being hurt.
There's a point, there's a point later in the agenda, we're gonna cover some COVID information, if you wanna stick around for that.
Yeah, let me step outside.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would say, okay. Armando, how about if, when I give you the hand, it's 30 seconds, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you hear me? Just fine with the mask on? Yeah. Hi, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Armando Venegas, I'm a special educator here at RB. I'll now be reading a statement from the Riverside Brookfield Education Association. The Riverside Brookfield Education Association stands in solidarity with the black community and against all forms of racism. We support the Black Lives Matter movement in its quest for racial equality, social justice, and police reform. We recognize the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and countless others as evidence of the systemic racism that still plagues our country. The RBEA will not be complicit in our privilege, and we are committed to stand with our black community to advance racial justice. Our membership empathizes with the RB community of color. At RB, we strive to foster an environment of acceptance and inclusivity. We vow not to tolerate hateful speech and actions within our classrooms, hallways, and extracurricular spaces. Our curriculum continues to evolve to include the experiences, ongoing challenges, and achievements of people of color. African-American history is American history. We encourage students of color to pursue careers in underrepresented fields such as science, math, and education. To this end, we urge our administration to actively recruit people of color. Our ever-changing demographics require a staff that is more representative of our student body. As we pursue professional development opportunities that address diversity and equity, we challenge our administrators and school board to implement meaningful change that directly addresses racial inequities within the Bulldog community. The RBEA has a responsibility to support and nurture an informed, civic-minded, and engaged student body. We acknowledge that this is an ongoing process, and there is much work to do. We are witnessing our Bulldogs take part in protests and demonstrations across our community and beyond. To our black students and their allies, we hear you, we are with you, and we are proud of you. Injustice for one is injustice for all.
Thank you, Armando.
Hello, everyone, thanks for allowing us to speak. I'm Dan Bonnerigo, math teacher, and I'm currently the RBEA president, if you didn't know that. The RBEA Exec Board would like to address two concerning topics that were discussed during the June school, school board meeting. The first involved the idea of full semester PE waivers, and the second involves changes in graduation requirements and elective requirements. The RBEA would like to know why these board policy changes are even being discussed, and what actual benefit our students would realize as a result of these changes. The RBEA opposes the changes the board was discussing for a variety of reasons, but most importantly, these changes do not seem to be student-focused and are not, and are certainly not in the best interest of students. At this board meeting, and at the August board meeting, you will hear some passionate pleas on behalf of our students authored by RBEA members and read by RBEA Executive Board members, which are aimed to help guide you to make informed decisions if and when this board calls for a vote on these board policy changes. The school board has, in previous meetings, discussed the idea of lowering graduation requirements. When this subject is brought up, we would like the community to know where RB stands compared to other local area high schools. The RBEA has compiled an extensive list of area schools' graduation requirements. I have a sample on this page, I have copies for you, but Argo has 22 credits, Donnas Grove South and North have 22, Elmwood Park has 26, Fenton has 22.5, Glenbard School District has 23, Hinsdale School District has 24, Lamont has 26, Lyons Township 23, Oak Park 21.5, Proviso East 22, Ridgewood 23, York 22.75, and Morton 20. As far as we know, there is no research that shows that lowering graduation requirements increases the odds of success in the future. In fact, research has shown that academic rigor at the secondary level correlates with lower college dropout rates. Lowering graduation requirements would also seem to increase the inequalities that exist in the education system. Uninformed students may choose to complete the bare minimum number of required courses, but what will their options be afterwards? Other students of means will most likely continue to fill up their schedules in order to remain suitable candidates for admission into selective universities. One of the more recent ideas seems to eliminate the requirements for certain electives in order to allow for a student more choice or flexibility in subjects. On the surface, this may sound benign, but RBHS is not a technical academy or a college. They are not in high school to choose a major. Students are supposed to have a liberal arts experience that exposes them to a variety of subject. Once again, how do these suggestions compare with other local area high schools? The common theme is that the school board seems to have these discussions without mentioning the true costs and benefits of the students involved. It, it is difficult for a community member to really understand the conversation because there's a lack of data provided to make an informed decision.
10 seconds.
Before, before the school board puts any of these ideas to a vote, we believe the community has a right to know what other area high schools are doing.
Thank you, Dan. Next, Dan.
Do you provide a copy for distribution?
Dan, can you-
Do you want the copy?
Yeah. Dan, can you email a copy of the list, please? So I could forward it to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Wendy Cassens, I'm an English teacher and the English Department Instructional Coach. I am on the exec board of RBEA. Before decreasing RB's graduation requirements, the RBEA respectfully requests you consider the following. In our experiences with students, many will only take the minimum number of classes required, especially if they do not have the benefit of a family member requiring or encouraging them to possibly take more. Where the number of credits lowered, for example, to 20, roughly 10% of the students would be exposed to two fewer credits, which actually translates into 300 instructional hours because of 75 hours per semester. Lowering requirements reinforces a lower set of standards that we then would expect for their education. Requiring students to take more classes increases the likelihood they will be exposed to new material. Counselors often hear students surprised by how much they ended up liking a class they were not planning on taking, but did so to earn the required number of credits or fulfill a required subject. Sometimes a student doesn't immediately sense the impact a class has on their learning and life. Asking students to enroll in a variety of courses challenges them to interact with content they otherwise wouldn't be exposed to without the requirement to do so. In addition, increased knowledge gained by taking a required class can help a student in whichever field they decide to pursue. For instance, the perspective architect gains an awareness of aesthetics by taking drawing and painting, or even a student who decides to go into business and did take speech or acting directing, all of a sudden understands how to present information in a variety of ways. If fewer credits are required, would students be allowed to graduate their, after their junior year? With our current requirements, each year about 10 students graduate one semester early. With a decrease in required credits, counselors estimate that roughly 10 more students would seek to graduate a semester early, and we're just concerned about what the students do then upon graduation. Because, a number of RB students do not necessarily plan on going to college when they enter as freshmen, but then change their minds by senior year. With a reduction in graduation requirements, some students likely would start high school with one intention, and then realizing perhaps too late that they don't have enough credits to do what they want to do, and then their path is changed a little bit because they are less admissible and perhaps less successful in college. Ideally, to give an RB student the best chance for admissions and success at the collegiate level, they should enroll in more courses to meet admission requirements. Here are some of the credit requirements for schools RB students often apply to for admission. University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, there are more than 24 recommended. For University of Illinois Chicago, at least 22.5, and University of Wisconsin-Madison is 23.
10 seconds.
Thanks, I appreciate your time. This is my first time speaking for a long time with a mask on, so I'm gonna have to start practicing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Minow, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Wellness Department. So on behalf of the RB Wellness Department, we'd like to thank you for taking the time to further discuss the ramifications of your proposed changes to our current PE athletic waiver policies. In choosing to expand this type of PE exemption from a competition season to an entire semester, as well as allowing this option for classes nine through 12 rather than just upperclassmen, you're providing our student athletes a strong disservice. In Wellness at RB, we address all areas of our students' health. We foster a climate of personal growth, improve self-esteem and self-confidence, increase fitness levels and physical literacy. The ISBE recently reiterated the importance of physical education in schools by stating physical activity can support students' overall health and well-being and help reduce stress and anxiety. Our students need PE to teach them skills which will help them get through the challenges of the present as well as the future. RB offers 18 PE classes with diverse, well-rounded, and incredibly valuable opportunities for our students to gain lifelong skills and routines that benefit their health and wellness. Our classes allow students to explore different aspects of health and fitness they may not know exist, especially as freshmen. We provide students an opportunity to express themselves in dance, leaders training, personal fitness, yoga, mind and body, advanced strength and conditioning, challenge education, freshman PE, and most importantly, our students learn to save lives in lifeguarding. Student athletes most likely became passionate about their sport because someone gave them the opportunity to participate in it when they were young. The Wellness Department offers and allows them the ability to grow and learn new skills which may enhance their sport performance and will build a lifetime of wellness. In allowing students to choose an exemption during the course registration process, as discussed in the June board meeting, we eliminate potential positive experiences that could impact the rest of our students' lives. Allowing students to use a PE, or, sorry, allowing freshman students to use a PE waiver exemption would rob them of this opportunity. Unfortunately, many students will choose the path of least resistance even if it is not in their best interest. Expanding PE waivers offer students this path of least resistance. Most importantly, the ISBE states that a PE exemption or athletic waiver can be used for ongoing participation in an interscholastic athletic program. The wording indicates that an excuse from PE class while participating is occurring. Therefore, students not permitted, or not, sorry, students should not be permitted to be in a study hall whether they're not active or nor educated, and not actively participating in sports season. Illinois mandates at least three days of PE a week. Athletes who are not in season are not complying with this requirement. Additionally, these students are not able to participate in the mandated fitness gram testing, which assesses our students' bodies' health and wellness if they're sitting in a study hall. The RBEA wants our student athletes in our wellness classes to provide modeling and mentoring to other students. We want to share, them to share their knowledge and passion for PE with them. We want to highlight the areas of health and wellness they may not have had the chance to experience before. We want them to understand that PE can enhance and advance their sports performance. We want our student athletes to feel empowered by all the other skills they are capable of executing beyond their sport. We want them to realize that participation in physical education is scientifically proven to improve focus, concentration, and productivity through their school day.
10 seconds.
If RB is truly interested in doing what's best for our student body, we should not expand the athletic waiver exemption policy. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Are there any other citizen comments or visitor comments? Okay. Move on with the agenda.
We'll go on to discussions and information items and talk about COVID information plan.
Okay, Mary Ann, could you, pull up that slide, please? So, you know, yesterday, the COVID-19 survey went out to a stakeholder, three stakeholder groups, teachers, students, and parents. And so, I think there's, you know, the committee has been meeting weekly, we've been sending out weekly updates. This is obviously taking the front and center attention of the administration as well as the other, I wanna say 13 volunteers that are on.
Is this in the packet?
No, this just came out today. So, I'll be referencing, this is just the first 24 hours of the survey, there's obviously six more days that could be, this can be completed. So, let me rephrase, I'm gonna be focused here, I'm sorry. So the, the information that's being shared is real-time information, we try to get it out within two days of each committee meeting, and the idea of that is just so that the community, as well as the board, as well as the faculty, the staff, can stay up to speed. The guidelines are ever-changing. Where this committee was at when we met on the first, first time at the end of June, and where we are at today on July 14, several things have already been somewhat changed, whether that's the difference of face shields, the clarification on whether desks need to be six feet apart or three feet apart, these are all the things that all school districts in Illinois are struggling with, and that you're reading in the paper, you're seeing in local articles, conference calls with the regional offices of education, superintendents' association, et cetera. So, what's on the overhead is the first 24 hours, so the reason this wasn't added in the pack is because this is about, from about four o'clock when we sent it out yesterday to four o'clock today. Based on these results, there were three options provided. I think the thing that needs to be clarified, and to make sure that's the audience watching as well as the audience in attendance, none of these models are set in stone. The idea of putting out this parent survey, or survey to the stakeholders, was to identify three potential models of in-person instruction, which the Governor's Restore Illinois Plan does describe for Phase Four. That during Phase Four, school districts should make all efforts to do some form of in-person instruction. So the three general models that we came up with were kinda like, what would a whole school day look like? And that's the late start, which was option one. Obviously, and we had things to consider on that survey, but the purpose of the late start would be that, at least that would be one less hour students are not having to wear a mask. Otherwise, that would resemble as close as we thought possible to a traditional school day of seven periods, lunch periods, and students being in attendance, all students being in attendance. The section, the second option was the half-school day. And so, one of the largest things that are in the guidelines that school, all school districts are dealing with is lunch. And with the current Phase Four guidelines, you can't have more than groups of 50 in one gathering. And so the concern about that is that we have way more than 50 in a traditional lunch period. So Beth Augustine took on the task with some staff members of her department to reformat the master schedule and add five additional lunch periods. Now, this isn't something that just needed to be done, as I stated before, for the, to deal with COVID. We had lunch overcrowding problems to begin with, and this was something that was on our to-do list, you know, that's been in the back channel, we were trying to figure out a proper way to do it. Well, that got raised to the forefront when we quickly realized that there was no way we could have in-person instruction with lunch periods if we just kept with our current three lunch periods. So that was why we revised the master schedule, but we tried to keep it as similar to what the current format is with seven periods and then five lunch periods. So, some of the terminology eventually will need to change to what people are used to, and this will be a format for our master schedule going forward, because we shouldn't have more than 300 kids in a caf, just to make sure students have enough time to eat and get through the lines. But those were some of the things that we had to adjust for that full master schedule if we were gonna go full day. Well, so, one of the options that came up was that we could do school for four hours and send students home at, after four hours with lunches to go, and we would eliminate that whole risk of having to eat lunch and find places to put kids throughout the building because we couldn't just keep them all in the cafeteria. And so, that was the justification of doing a half-day model. Now, this would still have all students in attendance, but we would, like I said, we would, students would come in for periods one through four on Monday, and then they would come back for five through seven on Tuesday with an hour of office hours if they needed to see a teacher, or do any makeup assignments, or get any additional intervention. So roughly came out to about 20 hours a week of in-person instruction. The third option was the, it also, excuse me, the half-day also reduces the number of passing periods from seven to four. The third option was a reduced enrollment. The committee had discussed, the subcommittee had brought two or three different models to the overall committee, and we met over the last two or three weeks and discussed, and trying to come up with a way where we could piece the student attendance in half. So maybe, we talked about, do we go with freshmen and sophomores and then juniors and seniors? And the concern about that option was that we have multi-level classes, we have several classes that have mixed enrollments, where we have classes with sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So it doesn't necessarily work for us to do, break it down by grade level. So the committee discussed doing an A-through-L, M-through-Z split. And we do recognize that not every class will exactly be split at 50%, but this did provide us pretty close to a half-enrollment model. So then the second thing that we had to discuss was whether we wanted those, those half-groups enrollments to come to school for the whole day and every other day. And so there was a lot of discussion that went on with the parents, the teachers, the students. And so one of the concerns that was coming up with one of the models that we had brought up about doing a full seven periods of half-enrollment, was that what are the students doing while at home? And would they have two to three, two to three days of no in-person instruction and just doing, you know, it would be like six hours or 12 hours of in-person, and 12 to 15 hours of remote learning on their own? And so there were some concerns from parents on the committee about having that long of remote learning. So Dr. Freitas worked with the subcommittee, he brought a second plan that talked about two half-days. So that like, the A-through-L students would come in in the morning, there'd be an hour or so break, students could take lunches to go, students could go home, there'd be enough time for a second group of students to come in, get their temperatures checked, grab a lunch if they needed to, and then go to class. I still think this third option does present some, some roadblocks in that we would still have a small pocket of students that would wanna grab lunch before they start their afternoon session, and that brings back in that whole eating on campus and having to take your mask off, which we are trying to avoid. So the survey results, you see, those are the three options that were presented in the survey to the stakeholders. The results you see as the faculty and staff, seven staff members had the late start as their primary choice, 47 had the half-day, and 44 staff members had the A-through-L, the split-day model as their first choice. So roughly around 98 stu, people took the survey in the first 24 hours. From a parent's perspective, 714 parents took it, and kinda as I was anticipating, 30% of the parents wanted to do a full day, day of school, 37% of the parents wanted to do a half-day of school, and just about 33% of the parents wanted to do some type of reduced enrollment. In regards to the students, 90 students had, in the first 24 hours, 90 students wanted the late start, 231 wanted a half-day, and 83 wanted the A-through-L, M-through-Z, for a total of 400 students that took the survey. So in total, we had about 1,216 people take the survey in the first 24 hours to give us some direction. The idea with this direction is to give the committee some idea of what the preferred model of in-person instruction is, and then for us to finalize a model. I anticipate that it will be some form of hybrid slash half-day model. And my reckon, my, my person, my suggestion for that is, I, we, we need to get some clarification from the Cook County Health Department on the six feet or three feet. Currently, on the ISBE guidelines, as of July 9, and frequently asked questions for COVID in-person instruction that I checked today, they're from July 9 was the last update, they said six feet when possible, and desks do not have to be- they said six feet when possible, and desks do not have to be six feet apart. So, that's where we were trying to get some concrete guidance from either the state or the Cook County Health Department on whether or not they should be six feet or three feet apart. If they require six feet, I think we would have trouble getting our full enrollment in the building, even for some form of a half-day model. So, I do have some ideas that I'm going to bring up with the committee tomorrow that would be a modified version of these things, but I think it's important for parents to understand a few things. One, the models that went out yesterday were just to do a temperature check on your preferences for, no pun intended, on the temperature check fees, but just to see what people's preferences were on in-person instruction. The second thing was to give us some guidance. Please understand that these are not set in stone. We've been sending out weekly safety guidelines that Ms. Matana, Mr. Mannan, who's present here tonight, have been working with that subcommittee on safety guidelines. Now, unless you're taking the time to read, and we try to keep them to one page, the parents on the committee, I'm in charge of the communications subcommittee, so the four parents are working with me on that. We try to keep them to one page, to general bullets, so parents can see, you know, the key facts. Like, we had some questions about airflow in the building, so this past communication that went out, there was a bullet added to the bottom. We worked with Joel and our facilities manager about addressing our HVAC models, so that we can increase the number of air changes in the building throughout the day to increase the amount of outside air. So, we have been addressing little things that parents have been sending in. We do get a lot of individual questions, but we've, we've discussed as a committee that it's probably best that we try to answer those questions through our stakeholder weekly output, so that people aren't trying to email individual administrators and then use, or email responses against the general direction of the committee. So, we're, the goal is to try to have a final decision by August 3rd. I know there's been some people that have asked, well, why, you know, we're four weeks away from opening school? This is not a race, and I think the sooner you put something out, it will be the sooner you're going to have to change it, because I think, as you've seen on a weekly basis, things are changing, whether it's spikes in certain towns, spikes in certain cities or states. I think there's a lot of things that are going to be changing. And so, our plan was to try to get a decision communicated out by August 3rd, and that the board would formally approve our plan at the Tuesday, August 11th board meeting. Now, that, you know, we traditionally would want to have something communicated to the board first, and then communicated to the parents, but the way our board meeting cycle doesn't set up that way, and this is way too early of a board meeting for us to make a final decision. I think this is a very fluid situation, and I think it's just going to take us some time to work through those things. With that being said, we do have a couple of administrators here that I do want to recognize for their work, as well as some of the committee members. Kevin Baldus is our new interim special ed director. So, Kevin's working, he has the task of now figuring out, he, if anybody on the transition committee has a tough job at special ed, because then, once a model is decided, we have to figure out how we're going to accommodate individual education plans to fit within the number of hours we're in the building. So, there will have to be some flexibility built in, so that our students with IP and required service minutes and interventions can still meet those under the model that we're going to put in place. Also present tonight, as I stated, with Dave Mannan in the back. Dave is Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, is in, is working hand-in-hand with Assistant Superintendent Kristen Smetana, and Tricia McVicker, our, our medical professional on the committee, working on safety guidelines. And so, they're being responsible for the things such as hand sanitizer, masks, temperature checks, HVAC, trying to identify how we can make our hallways one-way hallways, so when kids come out of class, we have a common flow of traffic. So, they're working on those types of things. In regards to safety measures, I checked again today, as I stated earlier, I checked on the ISBE guidelines, masks are required. And unless a student has a designated medical condition, with masks will be required, and the school district can work with that student to come up with some other type of face covering or face shield in the event they can't wear a mask. But the governor and the State Board of Education are still requiring masks. I know that was a question earlier in tonight's meeting. Ms. Kylie Lindquist is working with Dr. Freitas on the instructional subcommittee, and they've had the task of putting together all the different models that have gone out in the survey. So, one of the questions that came up from some of the parent feedback already in the first 24 hours was, why not, why wasn't remote, a full remote model, a plan in the survey? And so, and Kylie, I'll give you a minute to answer any additional questions that may come up, but the first thing we did as a committee, is we looked back at Hector's parents, our stakeholder survey that went out at the end of the remote learning in, in the fourth quarter, and we addressed as a committee the concerns that occurred, especially with our parents on the subcommittee, that occurred during remote learning in the fourth quarter. So, the first thing we actually did was revise the remote learning plan. And we wanted to make sure we had a plan, because we believe at some point in time this upcoming school year, there may be a point where we have to go full remote learning. So, that was addressed by the committee, and that was the first thing that was addressed by the committee, and we do have a revised remote learning plan. And that remote learning plan is a condensed schedule, but it will have daily face-to-face interactions. We will be requiring staff to do daily virtual lessons online via Zoom or Google Hangout with specific classes each day. And so, that was the first thing we addressed, and then we, the subcommittees have worked through the other models. So, I want to thank Kylie for her work with that. I also see that we have some members of the committee, Dan Bonarigo is on the committee, Doug Schultz is on the committee, Mark Helgason is on the committee, Lindsay Minow is on the committee. So, I want to thank their participation as well, that not only are they representing the faculty, but also representing the RBA and trying to come together with a plan. So, I think I've covered everything that has been asked. We have no updates on athletics or activities. We're anticipating an update from the IHSA before the end of July on the status of the fall athletic season. So, more information will be shared on that. We have no updates right now in regards to choir and band. I know that's been a lot of the questions we fielded from parents in regards to, what's the status of choir and band, because there actually is a large concern of, that's when kids are projecting their voice, they could be projecting, you know, with wind instruments or singing, that could increase the spread of germs. So, we're trying to work through some of those things. I think I've addressed everything, but I would like to defer to the administrators in the room that are working with a subcommittee. If there's something I missed, we could take a minute and you could provide any additional updates that needed to be provided. Hector, anything from your end?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, I'll thank you both, you addressed everything, but as Dr. Skinkis mentioned a few minutes ago, this is a fluid plan. This is developing based on the feedback. To all the parents, to all the teachers, to the board members, we're listening to you all. When we started this journey, we did not come with an agenda. You guys are agenda. Your needs are agenda. Your kid's safety is our agenda. So, I want to reinforce to everybody that we are listening to you all, and we are open and willing to revise our options to make sure we deliver the best programming possible.
Ms. Matana, anything? Mr. Mannan? Ms. Lindquist? Mr. Baldus? All right, I'll open it to board questions.
So, the question I have is, how prescriptive is what the school does? Is the Illinois State Board of Education going to tell us exactly what, what we need to do, or will the school have some variability? And is it necessary, do we have to have like our attorneys on board to, you know, if we deviate from anything ISB says, do we have to have our attorneys on board? Like, how precarious?
We are working with our attorneys. Our attorneys are more, are addressing some of the questions that have been brought up by the RBA reps on the committee about HR issues. We're also addressing with our attorneys, student issues for students who are asking about if they don't want to attend, or, you know, do they have to homeschool, do they have other options? So, we have been working through some options like that with our attorneys. The governor's recommend date, guidelines, there's only a few specific things that are required, like masks, five hours of instruction, that instruction can be blended, it could be in-person independent study, homework, a combination of several things. But the governor did state, and so did the State Board of Education, that a majority of the other items in there are recommendations, and the schools do have flexibility to implement their home plans. Where I think that is going to cause some problems is, you will have, you know, you could have a district five miles down the road doing one thing, and the district two miles up the road doing something completely different, and it's going to become very similar to graduation and the spring, when people are talking about how they're going to do graduations, and then you kind of get, you know, the inboxes get flooded with, well, my nephew's school in Oklahoma is doing this, and this school in North Dakota is doing this. And we've already started to see that from parents and teachers, you know, who have concerns about all the things they want to see in a plan. The one common message that we always try to either start or finish the meeting with, and whether it's the teachers that are on the committee here, or the administrators, is I've made very clear to them that we're not going to make everybody happy with whatever model we select. And as you can see, just from our parent results in the first 24 hours, we almost have a third split, right? So, you're going to have somebody that, you know, is going to feel like they weren't listened to, or they're, you know, they weren't dressed. But we're trying to be as flexible and take all those, all those pieces of information into consideration. I do think I need to make something clear. There were some parents that had, had submitted emails to Hector and I, like, oh, if we don't like any of these models, can we choose a virtual model? Like, at the end of the day, when the committee does finalize a model for instruction for this upcoming school year, that will be the model of instruction. If we have to work with an individual parent who has a severe medical, a student who has a medical issue, to do some accommodations, but we are not offering, some school districts are offering almost like a buffet style, where you can choose one or the other, we do not have the resources to do that. And with a high school setting, that would be very difficult to do. So, whatever final model, or compromised model, or reformatted model between these versions gets put together, that will be the model that will be coming back.
Were ninth grade, incoming ninth graders, students and parents, were they included in that, in the survey?
Yes.
Have, and I know I asked this earlier through an email, but are you guys going, or is the committee going to survey subs?
Ms. Lindquist?
Because all three options are really going to require subs for when teach, if, right, like if teachers are out.
Yeah, so, I'll use my teacher voice. My administrative assistant is in charge of, she oversees all substitutes, so that comes out of my office. And she is currently in the process of contacting by phone all of the subs who have worked with us in the past, to see what their availability is. We already know that some of them have medical concerns, and they will not be able to come into the building for the foreseeable future, but we're building right now a list of the subs that we currently have, as well as, I'm going to work, you know, we always have a self-posting out, but I'll work with Kristen to make sure that that is up to date and current, because we are going to need to, we are going to need to build a stable of subs that would be able to come in. So, we are exploring some options of how we do that. Right now, we're working with our current subs to find out how many of them intend to return.
Could you just share that with us once, when you get the information?
Sure.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention, Ms. Augustine is also on the committee as well. Sorry, Ms. Augustine, you're here to speak on something else I didn't want to.
So, I just want to say, I think, I mean, obviously, the health and safety of the students, the faculty, the administration, the parents, the families, the communities, everyone that those people all go home to, is paramount in this discussion, right? And I think the committee obviously has been focused on what's the right solution in a very, very fluid environment. So, I think that's just a lot of work, and kudos to all the work that's been done. I think it might be helpful, though, for those watching at home, just to kind of elaborate again on the subcommittees, so people know that there are, you mentioned a few, but there's some specific areas, and then also, what is the preferred way of getting questions into the committee? I mean, not flooding Hector's mailbox, your mailbox, our mailbox.
It's okay to send the questions, I'll go backwards, I'm a reverse source.
And then one more thing, then my suggestion is, you know, we probably need, in addition to the weekly updates, some type of a FAQ that gets regularly updated, because these questions are going to keep coming up, right? And they're, they're legitimate, they're very personal, this is a very tense time for everyone, and, and people are struggling looking for answers. So, I think the only trick here is to over-communicate, if anything.
So, the FAQ was decided by the committee not to put one out till a model was decided, because we feel that no matter what we put out in the FAQ, people are going to then have questions, or why did you choose this, or why, what about this? So, we thought it would be easiest to do an FAQ once a model is finalized. We talked about it even a little bit today, that once the model's finalized, like Kristen and I would take care of the FAQ for staff, so we can answer their questions, and that we would have another team, a subcommittee, put together an FAQ, like what Dr. Freitas, Mr. Mannan, Ms. Lindquist, Ms. Augustine, put together an FAQ for students and parents to answer their questions. So, we plan on sending that out closer to August 3rd, once we think we're getting close to a finalized model. In regards to questions, what I've been doing is with, whether it's teachers, or parents, or community members have sent in things, I say thank you for the email, I'll share it with the committee. Last week, I shared a couple of those emails with the committee of, here's some of the concerns we've gotten from committee member, committee members, here's some of the opinions we've gotten from people about what we're sending out, or, you know, their concerns, or the health concerns, or, you know, we have some people that submit, you know, communications that feel we shouldn't be doing any type of in-person instruction until there's a vaccine. And that's clearly opposite of what the governor and the State Board of Education has sent out. So, I do share all those with the committee, so if you send it in to myself or Dr. Freitas, you're going to get a uniform answer, then we're going to share it with the committee, and then we're trying to put some form of an answer in those weekly updates, so that we're not sending out individual answers. Third one was plans.
Just asked again about the structure of the committee, and, and so that, because I think that you did a good job of getting a lot of cross-sampling of people, but others have been interested saying, well, I want to be on the committee. Well, I think, there's a fine line there.
Yeah, the committee's already been set. There's four parents on the committee. One of those parents is also a health professional. We have, like I said, five or six administrators, we have five or six faculty members, we have representatives from the RBA, instructional coaches. And then, so what we have tried to do, we, we stick to our subcommittees of safety, learning, major events or athletics activities. So, like, obviously Brendan would handle athletics, Dave Mannan and Aubrey Prince, who represents the instructional coach of the Fine Arts Department, and those activities. All the teachers on the committee work with the instructional coaches, and Kylie and Hector on the learning committee, that's who put together some of these plans. The four parents work with me on the communication piece, so that we're making sure the communications are hitting the key points with the parent stakeholder group.
Thank you.
And I think the one thing I want to make sure is still clear, because the direction I interpreted from the board in, in May and in June, was the board was committed to do in some form of in-person instruction, in some type of model, in this upcoming school year. And I just want to make sure, is that still the plan from the board? Because if not, we're, we're putting in a lot of work and a lot of time, and if that's not the goal of the board, I just want to make sure that that's still the plan.
So, as, as I see it, we talked about doing, if we had to go to, you know, at-home model, doing that differently, which you addressed. I think we've come up with that backup, last resort plan, but as far as I'm concerned, I'll let everybody, we, we did give direction that we, kids learn better in the classroom. That's, that's, I think we found that out pretty clear last spring.
It's a board member, I'd like to see the kids, kids, young people, our students, come back in a safe way. That's been thought out by the committee. What colleges are doing, I still have a student in college, is they're considering ending their semesters by Thanksgiving. So, it could be, not that we might be able to do that, but if we had to go to a, a remote, because people travel over Thanksgiving, that might be a cut point, who knows? But it would be nice to see students together. Just anecdotally, my grandson hasn't seen anybody in months, and the impact of the students, they're sad. They're sad at home.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see students back into the building, as long as all of the particulars are really thought out, because, like Deanna said, not only student safety, staff safety, you know, everybody who's in this building. But having said that, I think we, I think the committee has to be very realistic in expecting parents who are not going to feel comfortable sending their kids to school.
Right.
I think that there have been some districts that, when they I think that there have been some districts that, when they surveyed parents, they found a pretty large percentage of parents who have said, nope, not, not sending my child, not happening. And I think we have to be realistic that, I know we can deal with it on a case-by-case basis, but I just hope the committee really discusses that because that could be a very big reality. I mean, what if we end up with like 20% of our parents who say, nope, not happening, not sending my kids? I mean, I don't want us to be caught off guard if that's the situation. And the same thing with my question about subs. You know, 70% of our subs say, nope, not happening, not coming in the building. Well, what are we going to do? So I just want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases because I do think we are going to have parents that no matter what the committee thinks through.
Right, we're anticipating anywhere from 10 to 15% of probably not coming. And if you think about that, that's anyway, my math people on the committee usually help me when we get to those points, but, you know, we're talking, that's roughly 240, there might be 240 kids, but if we have 1,400 or 1,300 students that still want to be on campus, we would still do what's best for the majority.
Well, and to your point earlier, someone made it, you're still not going to satisfy everyone, there's still, they're still going to want to be here all day regardless of what the science says, right?
But also, I think I'm fully in support also of all the models and with, you know, however much the students can be here. I think the fundamental decision to not consider the all-remote learning as an option is really smart because we know, as you described, if there is a, you know, a shelter-in-place order or something like that, we've been through it before, we know this could happen, we hope it won't. But just from pure planning logic, I think this is very smart not to throw this in because it would have now, you, is that much more complicated and because that's not in anybody's control, this could be ordered by the state. And if that happens, that...
Right. We wanted to figure out, and one of the things that was discussed at length on the committee, but especially with the parents, is it's really hard to go full-blown remote when freshmen have never met their teachers and nobody built relationships with their kids. So we know that there's going to be some staff members that have concerns, we know there's parents that have concerns. But when we did this last year in fourth quarter, you are already working with that group of students for three quarters if it was a full, a year class or at least a nine weeks as a quarter class. Not only is it tough to be coming to your, maybe your first high school experience where you're transferring into a district, but you don't know anybody else, then we're going to say, hey, we're going full-blown remote, right? So now, you're not building those relationships, you're not building those peer groups, there's the potential of maybe not having athletics or activities, so the social, emotional supports are going to be needed. We recognize that kids need to be on campus and they need those supports and those things. How that will all look in the final model that's selected is still to be determined. But I thank you for the compliment. Are there any other questions?
More discussion?
I have one more question and comment, I think. You mentioned the revision to the remote learning plan. Can we get a presentation on that at a future board meeting? I think it's very important to certainly the parents in the audience, but also to the board. Lessons learned from last spring, I think no one agrees it was a home run. So I think how do we, the fact that adjustments were acknowledged, needed and then made, I think is very important. I think understanding what those adjustments were would be very helpful.
Kylie isn't planning on attending the August 9th meeting with the graduation discussion. And so at that meeting, we'll have our finalized plan as well as, so we can show both our remote plan and then our final in-person plan so that those are put together. Both, the board will see both of them and approve that resolution.
Thank you.
And that resolution that's on tonight's agenda, that was a recommendation from our legal counsel so that, you know, there's a difference in legal opinions on whether or not the board has to adjust all their policies if they're changing how a traditional school day looks and how we're playing school and in the event we need to go remote, things like that. So we wanted to put it on there so you saw it as a first read. And then what we'll have to do in August is we'll drop in the modified in-person plan and the remote learning plan so in the event it's needed. This provides the board some additional protections in regards to whether or not we have to change policies, you know, some of the Torrid Immunity Act stuff, those types of things. Did I cover that right, Kristin? Those are the two main ones or was there a third one? I thought there was.
There was a, there was a third one. Technically, the superintendent is the one that by statute has to approve it, but the attorney felt strongly that by the board of education approving it, it would certainly carry more weight.
All right. You know, if, so parents that are listening, one of the things we'll put out in that FAQ, but grading will be returning to normal, expectations for completing classwork will return to normal. This will become as close as we can becoming normal to the playing school again. So I forgot to mention that as well.
All right. All right. The discussion on class rank and PE waiver.
Jim Franco, our guidance counselor's here tonight, he's our local expert on class rank. And Ms. Augustine, the direct assistant principal of student services.
Hi, everyone. So the discussion of class rank has been more often a topic, so this has been something that's been ongoing for probably the last 10 years. And with our fourth quarter grading last year being significantly impacted, especially with us following the state guidelines for do no harm to students, we really had to make some significant changes in fourth quarter grading. Oftentimes, the grade wasn't a true reflection of, you know, the student's work. So for the second semester of the 2019-20 school year, students were not ranked. So our graduating seniors, whatever their class rank was, at the end of first semester, that was the rank that remained on their transcript. So no better time than right now to discuss class rank and the possibility of eliminating it. I know I provided a couple of articles that was in support, that are in support of eliminating class rank as well as a list of approximately 50 schools in the surrounding area that have already eliminated rank. And I brought in reinforcements with Mr. Franco because he, I think, has the most up-to-date sort of knowledge about class rank and I'm going to let him take it away from here.
Great. So, anyway, the one question is like, why, so where does this even come from? I mean, I think back, you know, early 90s when I applied to college and rank was pretty important. But maybe about 15 years ago or so, a lot of school districts, what they were finding, especially if you have a high achieving student body, you could have a student with, you know, relatively good grades who's in the bottom 50th percent, you know, of the class. So, you know, this is more like kind of your stereotypical, you know, North Shore schools that, we're seeing a lot of that, students kind of, you know, not being negatively affected by the whole ranking system. So a lot of those schools, I mean, I gave you that, a list of some schools that have dropped rank and say that happened, a lot of those happened like 10, 15 years ago. And then we had some discussion about it. So there's always that aspect, how does it, are students being negatively affected by being ranked? The other thing too is I think rank is probably a, was more of a, you know, a relic of a time when knowledge was harder to come by about a student. So, you know, you had everything on a piece of paper that, they didn't have all these reps going out to these high schools, learning about these high schools. So making an admission decision, the rank sort of helps, okay, how is this student, you know, relative to his or her peers? So, you know, I think, you know, the one thing that we're always trying to do, you know, some people make the argument, okay, the good thing about rank, and I can see this argument, the good thing about rank is if the, for the students that are competitive, maybe it pushes them to push themselves more. You know, I can see that side of things. You also see that there can be sort of a corruption of like, why I take the class? So I'm taking, I'm not taking the class because I feel it could be best for my knowledge base, best for my intellectual skills, I'm taking it because I, you know, I want to be ranked, you know, in the top 10% of my class instead of, you know, the top 15% of the class. So, and I always think, you know, what are we really, I mean, we don't want this, I would argue, we don't want the students to compete against each other, we want them to compete against themselves, we want them to be working as hard as they possibly can. It's kind of, just because you're the best of a group, that doesn't mean you're doing a really good job necessarily, you know? Like Golden State Warriors, they're winning national championships, NBA championships, but they wouldn't have won any in the 90s because the best basketball team in the history of the sport was playing, right? So that would be an example. So now, this other stuff would be...
Jim Franco left.
So these are some thoughts.
Brings it right back here.
Effect on course choices that, again, kind of, students taking it more because they want to add weight, not necessarily because they're maybe interested in a certain career path, they end up not going down that route because they're more worried about the weighted coursework. Definitely hear students say a decent amount of the time saying, you know, I don't want to take that class because it's not weighted. Or they'll take a class simply because it's weighted, like I was saying before. And you'll have, sometimes you have teachers that are, you know, let's say, whatever, harder graders, more rigorous, and students want to avoid that and when that might actually might be in their best interest long-term intellectually because of the fear about how it's going to affect rank. And then, so the competition aspect, so there gets to be a little bit, sometimes, not all students, but there's a bit of a gaming kind of that goes on. So for example, we have this policy that you can have a credit, no credit for a non-graduation requirement or PE. And many students are not attuned to that. Some students are very privy to it and they come in right off the bat, first semester, freshman year, they're taking PE credit, no credit. So the advantage of that is if you're, you know, have a weighted GPA above a four and you get an A in PE, that's still bringing your weighted GPA down. So like number one student in our class this year, I think was like a 4.609. So now, it can be pretty substantial. So let's say you had a student that every semester waived PE, that would be about a .15 difference in GPA. So you could have, I looked up like the number 20 student had a 4.432. I don't know if he or she, you know, what he or she did with PE classes and waiving, but if that student hadn't, let's say they did, they would have gone up to, from 20 to like two or three, just because they sort of knew, you know, how the game was played to some level. So, you know, I think that's always a concern, the whole gaming aspect of things. I gave you that stuff, you know, and then of course, college admissions, I gave you a little bit of, that's from a national mission, National Association for College Admissions Counseling, that chart, just trying to show you where rank kind of falls, you know, for most schools in terms of order of importance. And it used to be like 1993, you know, 42% of colleges saying, you know, kind of a very important factor, considerable importance, and then a couple of years ago is down to And then just talking to admission counselors, you know, I emailed people, but I know LT did a study eight years ago, they contacted a ton of people. The consensus is pretty much, you'll hear people, they'll say something like, we don't need it, we don't use it. It'd be nice, it's nice if you have it, but it's not mandatory. Some schools, like Nutria does like a grade distribution on their profile so that an admission offerer can get an idea of like, what do these grades mean in the context of that, students, peers, because that's another way to get similar information across. But I just, I chose a couple of comments and put that on that sheet so you could see that. Sometimes college scholarships come up, you know, what if there's a ranking aspect to, you know, you have to be in the top 10% of your class for a certain college scholarship. So same kind of thing, you could have, like August, Dana has a scholarship, I was looking at this the other day, it basically said you had to be in the top 10% of your class to, of your high school class. So that would be unweighted, that'd be a 3.9 GPA, so that'd be pretty much straight A's. And then they actually say on their website, if your school doesn't rank, that caveat is removed essentially. That's an isolated thing, but things like that can pop up. And then, I guess lastly, just additional info, I showed you, you know, those are in order, Triton would be the number one schools, most of our kids apply to, but then in order there's, you know, UIC, U of I. I just wanted to show you kind of how they look at things and how they treat it, just to show you that there's no sort of negative effects from most colleges. And, oh, the last thing, just sometimes it comes up like stress, oh, you know, we're stressing students out about rank. I don't love that concern because I feel like part of that is, it is, competition is a part of life. So how do you navigate that? I would approach it more from the standpoint of, is it helping, is it the right approach to academics, to learning? We want the students to compete against themselves, not, not just because, you know, I'm doing better than one of my peers, something along those lines. Okay. Do you have any questions?
Beth, do you have anything you want to add? So the reason that we were bringing this forward to the board in July for a timing perspective is that we would want to be, if the board chooses to make a decision to eliminate class rank, we want to be able to communicate that now before the seniors start their senior year. Secondly, Beth had advised the board and myself that class, the curriculum council for sure, that class rank will be off because of that fourth quarter of last school year and not having students complete their courses in the manner of where they could, their grades could be impacted from the fourth quarter and kids receiving only their third quarter grade and only having the ability to go up. That would, that does throw a wrinkle into our current ranking system for our current senior, our this upcoming senior class, is that correct, Beth?
Any student that was a student last year?
Any student.
Right. Their rank will never be accurate. You know, we made a notation on the transcript this year, you know, that due to the lack of in-person learning, so on and so forth, so that colleges were aware. I do want to just bring up one other point, could you speak to college boards' application that if you don't rank, that there would be an option, there's always that option if we wanted to like look at students at like the top quarter or, you know, that's also an option.
Yeah, you could, some schools will report decile and quintile, quartile, so that's another way to get at similar information. And on the Common App, they always ask, like, you know, what's the number one student's GPA, something along those lines. But you can, you don't have to have that information in the Common.
So I do have a question though, because we posted on the fence that, you know, we were highly ranked as a high school and that's really important. We also really like it when we're ranked very highly in our, at our sports competitions, right? So what are we proposing in lieu of that? Graduation, the top 10 students are recognized and I think it's important.
I think Dr. Freitas has a recommendation that he was going to bring up, but I wanted to make sure, were any questions first for Beth or Jim?
Yeah, I mean, and the question of ranking, sorry, it's like, it's a great question. And I think the nice thing about competition, sports competition, is it's really clear, there's a winner and there's a loser. I mean, I, for example, school rankings, you brought that up, you know, what are the criteria to judge that school or that student? So when I think about learning, for example, how do you measure like intellectual creativity? Like, that's a tough one, you know, to get at. And can you reduce it to, can you legitimately say this student over here is, number two is better than number 11, you know? And maybe if number 11 has a really phenomenal idea of civic duty, you know, that's not necessarily measured in that rank. So I guess what I'm saying is I think the rankings are only as good as what you're, the information you're using to make those rankings. So that would be my thought on it.
Dr. Freitas, you want to touch on what you were going to recommend?
I have it in my principal's report, I could do that right now.
I would have you just speak to that piece right now.
Okay. Give me one quick second, guys, let me just...
So what, so you had said, you know, you did the GPA, the top and the 20, do you know the 50%?
I mean, roughly, this is more of a, I don't know, the, would be the, sorry, the median was like a 3, 3. You know, so here, you'd have a good number of students, you know, with a 3.0, it's be in the bottom half of their class.
Bottom half of the class and then a 3.0.
And because we wait all of our AP courses, we wait all of our honors courses, I mean, you can have a significant portion of the class like at the top. So when you're looking at the difference between the number one student, the number 10 student, I mean, it's, you know, a very, very small margin.
So the weighted grades go away then?
Mm-mm.
The weights remain?
The weights would still remain, yeah. We would still continue to wait AP courses and wait honors courses the same. So when a college is reviewing a student's transcript, they would, you know, see if a student earned a 4.3. And it's awesome, I mean, they're going to see the AP courses and the honors courses listed on their transcript, but if a student has a GPA that's above a 4.0, that's certainly an indication that that student took advantage of AP or honors level courses. And I still... And I still, I mean, I know that colleges, the number one factor that they really look at is, did the student sample the rigorous coursework that their high school provided and offered?
So, I'm very interested in the alternatives kind of being discussed. But I guess, just to say it one more time, so anyone who was a student in the spring of '20 has a GPA that is now not calculated in the same manner as classes in the past?
That a GPA, well, their ranking.
Yes.
Their ranking. So, whatever rank they had-
Is missing ones.
At the end of the, of last, of the first semester of the 1920 school year is the rank that's currently, that will stay with them.
Well, I think that's an important piece, right? It's this gap in time, and I wouldn't be surprised if there were multiple boards who are not on this list looking at this at this point because it's, it's an opportunity in some ways.
I would also just comment that, in my opinion, this is also an equity, an equity issue. It'd be interesting if you had the, some stats on how many, in the last five years, 10 years, how many of our students of color are in that number? Because in my opinion, this is also an equity issue, right? Those kids are not being recognized properly for the hard work that they're doing. Again, growth versus achievement, and in this article that was sent to us a few weeks ago, right? Are you selecting talent or developing talent? And like that, you know, I think that just says it all right there. Obviously, you know where I stand.
But if we look at our valedictorian, why would we want to take away such an achievement? The valedictorian was a Latino student.
Well, that's, Dr. Freitas is going to talk to us about, and again, and I am also in, in school and in the way that I run my department at where I work is, you should reward what you want more, right? And there are ways, there are other ways to do that than class rank. So, right, because we're here to educate kids. So, when they do well, how are we recognizing them?
And, you know, and that leads into my question. We did not work on this together. So, I think the question that the board should consider when talking about topics, how do we recognize academic excellence? Traditionally, we've ranked our students. So, today, I'm just going to talk about an alternative on how to recognize academic excellence. It is referred to the Latin honor system, which is very similar to what colleges do. Summa cum laude means with highest honors. Magna cum laude means with high honors, cum laude is with honors. So, what schools have done, there's some of our neighbors, you know, that have done something similar like more in Hinsdale Central, LT does something similar but a little different. They've, and I'll give you to the why. So, they've decided for GPA purposes, cum laude is 3.0 to 3.49, 3.5 to 3.9 is magni cum laude, and summa is 4.0 and above. But the more important reason is the why. Why go from class rank to Latin honor system? It gives more opportunity for students to be recognized. It rewards students for academic excellence measured against a standard of excellence instead of comparing to their peers. And you said it, Ms. Tauner excellently is. It may promote academic achievement among minorities because it's an equity issue. For so many years, minorities have been disenfranchised, have been beat up, have been ranked in the bottom, you know? And what happens, you know, I mean, it's hard to stay motivated, hard to stay engaged for a people, for a group. So, if you put that standard, more than likely, you will get Latinos and blacks to aim to succeed to raise their GPAs. So, those are the reasons why, and this is just one system, there are many systems. You could use the Latin system, you could use your own unique verbiage. But to address and help Latinos and blacks achieve, to motivate them, to reward for a standard, here's the standard, you can aim it, to have it clearly defined, and to provide more opportunities to recognize our student, to recognize groups of students, you know? Because you also brought up, Ms. Tauner, a very important, you know, item. How many of Latina and black students have been ranked, let's say, in the top 10, top 20, top 50, you know? I've seen a few, but this is an opportunity to include more of our changing student or changing demographics. So, this is just one example. You know, I'm more than willing to, in future meetings, bring more examples. But I think this is one that many schools have gone to, to align themselves, but not only colleges, but to also promote more success among the minority students.
Can you talk about how some of those schools then handle the, to Laura's question, the valedictorian issue? Does, does a class come together to select a representative entity?
And we do that here.
We don't-
For the top 10, no?
We go by the top 10.
Yeah, so for the top 10, the students vote for some speakers, you know? So, I know, for example, at other schools I worked at more, and they, you kind of do like a peers voting for a speaker to speak at the graduation. So, kind of like, we have our student president, our Student Association president speak, and then the student body picks a student or two more, you know, from the top 10 to speak to their class. So, that's how it could be handled, you know? I think we have some pieces in place.
How are we going to recognize the top, the top, that academic excellence, that four-year achievement? And there were many Latinos in our top 10 this year. Let's not take this away, we work so hard. You work, and I would say rank is the all with all, you know? I used to calculate the rank among orthopedic surgeons, and they were all in the 99% of their graduating class. And I had to line them all up, and even though they were 99% among all medical students, somebody was last. It's a mathematical formula, I understand that. But there's also that point of, so, okay, if we're going to move away from the formula, because the formula has some flaws, how do we also recognize that special group? I like the categories because more people can get in a standard that's objective, you know? And you could make that, and maybe classes are past fail, we've talked about, let's take them out of the formula. But then, where's that gold, that top, that really top prize?
So, one thing I think you could do is look at what the cutoff was for the top 10 students over the past 10 or 15 years. And that could then, you could identify a GPA cutoff that could then be that top category where those students are getting that recognition. Because then, it's not a moving target, and it's not only limited to 10 students, but you're saying over the past 15 or 20 years, this is the, this is about where, you know, our most elite students have stood in regards to their GPA. And then, as long as students know that, they know what target they're trying to hit, and you could still recognize that top group of students.
But then, don't we still have the manipulation of the GPA, which is what we were talking about? So, if I'm a band student, I don't have to take PE. I just take an AP class, and now I jumped ahead of the football player.
Sure, and that GPA cutoff could be adjusted for, you know, that manipulation of the GPA. That could all be done in the analysis. But then, that way, you're still having, you know, that elite group of students that really does excel. And I think that would certainly be, well, more than 10 students, without a doubt.
And this is something, as Kristin speaks to defining, you know, what makes each category that we would define as a committee, if we were to go this way, we'd include people, you know, so we can solidify and define the categories to make sure that we still, you know, honor not only the very top, but, you know, as many students as possible. So, we, we work through all the minor details on, on how to make sure that we recognize as many students as possible for their achievements.
My, my only concern, you know, everybody likes that book, The Rainbow Fish. And, you know, that rainbow fish, he's beautiful, he has all the scales, but then he's only wonderful when he gives them all away. I don't want us to regress to the mean and everybody equal because we really do prize that elite student, that elite group. I think there's a time and place, like, yeah, we can have all the categories, that's great, but let's not also lose that student who is above, and yeah, I mean, we have a board member here who is an elite artist and has done something, and you recognize for your work. These are lifetime accomplishments, and that's what inspires people to move on and do something bigger than themselves. So, however that is, and for me to replace the rank, how, the conversation would be, how do we recognize that elite group also with expanding the categories?
Well, I think we can revisit this again in August. And Dr. Freitas, if you want to work with Ms. Augustine and the counselors to bring a final recommendation on the Latin rank system or another system you want to come up with, then we may or may not fully meet Ms. Haruska's question or task. But I think we should give it one more shot to go around, let them see what Hector brings as a final recommendation. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion that we have our student reps starting in August? This is a great thing for them to weigh in on. Obviously, as non-voting members of the board, but they have a different perspective. So, I think their input, you could maybe reach out to them and get their feedback on the Latin system or the whole concept that we have.
They can be, you can reach out to them now like we're doing on, they're on the COVID committee as well, so you could talk to them as well.
Well, yeah, because we do want to-
We got to have a decision on this in August.
Right, so, and I'm trying to be mindful of the schedule there, but I do think this would be a very meaty thing for a student rep to-
Sure, that is, they have them for a reason, right? We should use them.
Mr. Franco, you can go, Ms. Augustine, you got to stay. Ms. Lepus, are you coming up forward, please? I would like you to do a quick.
My God, why isn't always like this whole thing, like she's going to talk?
She's just so excited to come talk to us all the time.
Now you really can be quiet, Beth.
Okay, so we got the update on the Curriculum Advisory Council, and then we can kind of bounce back and forth between the policy agenda items. And at the June board meeting, we clarified that we were going to focus on graduate, any new, at the Curriculum Advisory Council that occurred between the June meeting with Laura and Ramona and myself, Kylie, Beth, and Hector, the focus would be on PE waivers, any new course recommendations. We were going to look at the PE waiver policy and procedures, but not get into, after that group match, we talked briefly on graduation requirements, but an update was provided to the board on a Friday update that we're going to have to circle back and reattack the graduation committee in a separate curriculum council, which is scheduled to occur, I believe, July 24th, if I'm not mistaken, or 22nd, I'm not sure of the date. It's happening before August.
Yes.
Right? And that's going to be the focus of-
July 28th at 1:00.
With, that will be the focus of grad requirements. So, if Kylie wants to provide a quick update on the overall curriculum council, and then we can jump into the PE discussion.
So, when we met with the curriculum council, as Dr. Skinkis mentioned, we did discuss graduation requirements and some conversation from some board members that were, you know, wanting us to look at taking a reduction there and lowering those a little bit, especially in the wake of ISBE reducing requirements last semester because of the COVID-19 and in quarter four, I think that's probably what spurred that discussion. We also, at that meeting, took a look at, which is what we typically do at that meeting, is take a look at new courses that are being proposed through our leadership council to give the Board of Education an idea of what we would like to propose for the following school year that would be potentially changing something that goes into our curriculum guide. So, we have one course that we are talking about with the Curriculum Advisory Council, and we were going to revisit that when we come back. The discussion about graduation requirements is certainly ongoing. And I know, you know, with the statement that was shared earlier, I pulled some data, you know, as well. So, it's, it's something that we are continuing to look at. The initial discussion about that was from, I would say, the building administrative side, and I think echoing at Dr. Skinkis as well, would be to really be cautious not to drop graduation requirements any lower than what it would take to be a full-time student in this building. A student can take their minimum to be considered a full-time student every year is taking five courses. So, anything that would be lower than that, which would equal out to a 20, we would not be in favor of as a, as an institution that wants to be, you know, as Ms. Haruska said, we're talking about being competitive and wanting to be able to say that we are a school that graduates competitive students that are able to go into whatever their next step is and be very successful at that. And I think as you, as you want to do that, you have to consider the message that lowering graduation requirements sends, certainly. So, there is a potential, you know, to have a conversation about if we're looking at giving students more choice and more access to what their next steps are, and maybe even being able to advance that next step. Maybe the committee would consider, and potentially the board would consider, looking at removing some restraints that we put on our students within our graduation requirements before we would start hacking into the graduation requirements. A few years ago, when I was new to the district, one of the things that we had, an organization that we used to work with do was put together some numbers that compare us to the top 10 schools in the state of Illinois. And we had some board members that really were interested in seeing how Riverside Brookfield stacks up against those top 10 schools, that's the best of the best, right, that we're talking about. So, I went through and I pulled those top 10 school graduation requirements, and they sort of vacillate anywhere from the lowest Deerfield, not Deerfield, the lowest being Fremont High School at an 18.5, and then the next lowest, Nutria, is a 19. But you're upwards then, when you're talking about schools like Miquel Valley and Hinsdale Central, you're talking about graduation requirements that exceed ours at 24. What I noticed when I started printing these graduation requirements is that there aren't the number of constraints in a lot of these requirements that we put on our students in terms of that freedom of choice piece. If I'm a student who knows that I want to go into an apprenticeship when I leave high school, and I know that I want to take Mr. Weisar's automotives class, we're looking at the idea of being able to give that student that option. And, you know, I certainly, you know, heard what the RBA had to say, and certainly, that's a consideration as well. Yes, we are people who are charged with giving our students a well-rounded education. But I think that this board has made very clear, in my mind, in the last few years, that we are also charged with supporting our students and preparing them for that next step so that we don't have students who go to that next step and waste a semester in college like I did, going into something that I have no interest in, and I had no business being there. So, I think that we have several responsibilities to our students, and that's why I think this conversation is ongoing and requires us to really be thoughtful in the why. We would be looking to, to reduce graduation requirements, where I certainly would be someone who would be very, you know, in favor of students having some less restrictions on them and being able to really explore what's important to them. And that's sort of why that conversation is ongoing, because it is a big thing to, to say we are going to go from 22 to potentially 20. We're essentially talking about four semester classes there. So, it's not something that we're taking lightly, and we certainly want to be able to balance giving our kids opportunities and options, but also maintaining our status as a school that is really standing on its academic laurels and really having high expectations for students. And I think that we have to be careful as an administration of sending a message by reducing graduation requirements that says, we're making it easier for kids to get, to get through our building, and, and just make sure that we're balancing what, the needs of our students and what's appropriate for our students with what we're requiring them to take.
I think, I think it's important in this discussion to reframe it a little bit. I think the discussion we had in June, I mean, I was surprised to see so much discussion around reduction in graduation requirements, because that's not at all what I heard in June. I heard in June, we had state changes that we had to adhere to. Is this a chance to look at the overall curriculum and do what you're describing here? You know, how do people fit the pieces of the puzzle together? I didn't hear anyone saying, "Let's make this less rigorous." And I think that, that message needs to be kind of just course corrected a little bit. And maybe it's a, we need to review the curriculum, we need to look at all of the restrictions and the options and the potential, as opposed to, we want to have a discussion about reduction of graduation requirements. Because that, to me, is not a, it's certainly not where I am in this discussion.
Sure.
And I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think that's an important nuance that we need to be careful of.
I mean, my understanding was maybe, was maybe a little bit different than that. So, I think maybe within the Board of Education, there are differences, right, like of, of that view, right? Different sides of that view.
Can you give an example, like when you're saying removing restrictions or removing restraints or having less restrictions, can you just give an example of- Can you just give an example of restriction or?
So, for example, in our, and of course, I printed out 10, top 10 schools' graduation requirements, but not ours, because that's just 2020 for you right now.
Kylie, if you can eventually circle back to PE, we're going to hit graduation more.
Yes. If you can jump in, if I miss this up, answering her questions. For example, under our sort of extra requirements in terms of, right, outside of the English, the math, the science, the social studies requirements and the PE requirements, we have very prescriptive requirements, for example, with cultural and global area studies, where a student has to take global area studies A, global area studies B. A student at RB has to take fine arts survey, so that's a semester within their schedule if they're not able to waive it. Whereas when I look at a graduation requirement like Hinsdale Central, they have their English, math, science, social studies requirements, their consumer act requirement, which is a state requirement, and their PE, and then they have a whole chunk that says elective arts. And students are able to select from seven areas of elective courses, in art, in business, in family and consumer science, in world languages, in music, in technology, all of those things to make up those two credits. Hinsdale is not saying to a student, you have to take this elective course, you have to take this one, and the rest of them are your choices. And we also talked very, I think at length, about doing something similar to what Fremd High School does, whereas when they put their, and you don't have to see what's on it, but when they put their graduation requirements in their curriculum guide, they have the area of academic requirement, they have their graduation requirements, the state graduation requirements, and then they have community and college and career programs. This is how many are suggested. They have four-year colleges and universities, this is how many are suggested, as well as highly selective colleges and universities. So they have a chart that lays it out that could potentially address some of the concerns, like what Wendy was talking about, the idea of a less informed student not being necessarily set up for success the same way. So that would be something that we would really want to look at, how we build potential models. I'm a kid who wants to go to this kind of school, this is what your four years here needs to look like.
And we currently have that in our curriculum guide. However, we, you know, we no longer give students copies of the curriculum guide, everything's online, and so much of the information is really just learned during the pre-registration meetings with counselors. So I just think we would do an even better job in making sure that students, when they're making their four-year plan, that they're really, they know, they're made aware about which sort of pathway that they're going.
So Kylie, I would suggest, for the August meeting, we're going to obviously have a curriculum council meeting, but maybe we lay some more of this out, and we can get a little more into that. Ms. Alis, I would say that I think there are some differing opinions of the board with regards to the graduation requirements. I think we need to dive into that a little more in August.
Yeah, and I just want to say real quick, Dr. Skinkis, that the, you know, when we discussed in the curriculum committee, the idea of reducing graduation requirements never meant reducing, you know.
Rigor.
Rigor or anything. It just meant opening options. Some students like to graduate at three and a half years, take a half year at the community college, hit their college, you know, their state college, save a little money. It just opened up options. It never meant reducing rigor. You know, it's condescending to think that if we reduced requirements, our students would assume they could only take that. It's just, we believe our students have the highest ability to make good choices, and we're trying to give them more. That's, so I don't want anyone to think that.
All right. We've got some more discussing to do. Kylie, I would bring back those documents, but I think what would be helpful if we provided a nice summary after the curriculum council for the board in their packet.
Yes.
Because today's conversation is to focus more on the PE waiver. So I just wanted to give a brief update from the curriculum council, but thank you for going into that a little bit. With the PE waivers, so we went through, the board had asked us to focus on PE waivers. At the June board meeting, the suggestion was that we looked at opening up PE waivers for nine through 12. And then there was, I suggested that we consider keeping PE as a freshman year course, and then it's a freshman and sophomore course, because they have to take health as a sophomore. And the board said, no, we allow kids to waive out of PE as freshmen in marching band. We should look into that for PE waivers. So the first thing we did, which is included in your packet, Beth did pull the specific PE language from the school code, and as you can see, it is limited to 11th and 12th graders that are involved in an athletic, ongoing participation in interscholastic sport. However, Mary Ann, can you go to that? I think it's on page 119. Now, it does offer on a case-by-case basis that you could do a PE waiver for a ninth or a 10th grade student in the event if they have a special case, but it predominantly says that it should be limited to 11th and 12th grade. The committee's interpretation, or the advisory council's interpretation of those special cases, like every once in a while, we'll get a student that, I know I had this at Bartlett, was like a world-class figure skater and was trying to make the Olympic team. Like, and so there's a student that was training before and after school in figure skating and, you know, could show proof that was doing extreme training year-round. And so we were able to make a special accommodation for that. Beth, you would know best if we've done that in the past here with any kind of.
Yes, we've had a couple of gymnasts that we've allowed to have a PE waiver so that they could leave the building at the end of sixth hour to go to training, and would be required to have a note from their coach. I would say maybe one a year, maybe two.
And so the big question is, is that, the board's big question was, well, why aren't we just giving that student the flexibility to take a study hall for the entire semester? Obviously, you could see how the language is kind of written and how it's written in our board policy, where it says ongoing participation. So that would be whether or not we feel that we can, we would have to talk with legal counsel if we feel we have flexibility to do a semester. Now, as I said, shared historically, we fixed the marching band because it used to be for an entire year. And so, as Mr. Frankel brought up earlier about some students, you know, maybe manipulating the system in order to take additional courses and raise their class rank in GPA, that's something the previous board had identified, that students were taking marching band. Our marching band only participates in the fall in marching, and they only participate at home games, which are like four to five times a year. And so this is something that's not like they're a competitive marching band that participates year-round or does parades year-round. And so that board decided to do where they could only waive out of PE for the fall semester. The one other question that did come up during the advisory council was the discussion of how would this work procedurally? And so I'll let Beth touch on that, and then the board can ask questions after that.
Yeah, I think that would definitely be a challenge, since we, sections that were laid, we have our students select their classes, starting in, as early as November. And when we begin sectioning for staffing, the students are scheduled into a PE class. And then how it works now is, once a student is on a varsity sport, they request a PE waiver. Once we have the paperwork, the counselor double books them in the PE class and study hall, so that it holds their spot. And then once, if they, for whatever reason, leave the team or are, you know, no longer allowed to be on the team for academic reasons, behavior issues, or when their season ends, then they are dropped from the study hall and put back into their PE class. So the challenge would be to come up with a way for varsity coaches to, and somehow keep a list, let us know which students are going to be making those varsity, you know, team for the upcoming school year, you know, the high probability that they will. And then we would have to make sure that when we were sectioning, that even though those students weren't counted into the numbers, that we would have to leave spaces for students that might end up back in a PE for a number of reasons.
They didn't make the team, or if they got cut or quit.
Right, they just didn't, right, they quit, they no longer want to participate, I mean, any number of reasons. So we would have to, we would be kind of guessing, especially in the first year, what that would look like. And then I'm guessing that they would be in a study hall, right? They wouldn't be taking an additional course, because then that would sort of, that would kind of go against what we're trying to do right now with class rank. Like, a student would be in a study hall. The whole purpose of the student being a study hall is, if they're in a varsity sport, is to allow them time to work on academics, because they have practice and they have games after school. So I think that, I mean, that's always been my understanding of why a student has the opportunity to waive out of PE. And not all of our athletes do. You know, some of our athletes stay in PE, and we have a number of our coaches that actually encourage students to be in PE and take conditioning, you know, as in, as sort of an additional practice during the school day. So the logistics would be something we would definitely have to work through.
So if a kid picked a PE waiver in November and picked another course, then all of a sudden it comes and they don't make that team, they've been sitting for nine to 10 weeks. Let's say they were trying out for a winter sport, right?
Right.
So they could be taking a PE waiver, could be in another course for half a semester, almost half a year already, and then they would be short of credit in graduation because of the PE, not having the PE, right?
Right, and then you're, then you're, then you're building FTE for classes that you're not necessarily guaranteeing that that student is going to be in. I mean, if for some reason they have to.
Do you see any way to address the board's concerns from the June meeting in modifying this policy? Is there anything that we're missing in regards to PE waivers?
I mean, the way I've always interpreted is, and the way I read it, is it's when they are in season.
Okay.
When they're in season.
Do we allow kids that get out of PE for marching band to take another class?
No, so they're taking, no, the marching band.
Is in lieu of PE?
Is in lieu of PE, correct, right, for a semester.
Right, so that.
But the language, the language in the board policy specifically says marching band during the semester.
Right.
So that's why.
So the old language used to be marching band, and then those kids would take something else second semester.
The loophole was that another way to waive out of PE is if you're taking a course that's specific for graduation or for college admissions. So students were taking AP courses and saying that they would need that for college admissions. Now, we, if that's the way to get out of PE, we actually require that they get something specific from the college, that they need to take a course in order for them to have admission. You know, sometimes it's like specific for like a program that does like a dual enrollment, whereas, you know, they can get into like a pre-med program or a pre-bet program. So maybe they need to take both AP chemistry and AP biology their senior year, and the only way to do that is to waive out of PE. So.
So we count PE in the GPA requirements currently?
Do we count PE in the G?
We grade it like a GPA course?
Yes, it's a course.
And in a way, it's written in the state guidelines that students have to take four years of PE, but it's not necessarily a graduation requirement, correct?
The language is written that a student needs to be engaged in physical activity every day unless they are participating in, you know, sports, unless they're taking health. But there's no specific credits. So that's why some schools will award PE a quarter credit and not a half credit, because there's nothing specific to the number of credits that are required. It's being enrolled in physical activity or participating.
Three days a week, right? Minimum of three days.
Yes, three days a week.
Is that something the Board of Education should be considering when we look at these graduation requirements, that maybe we don't address the PE things, the PE waivers, but maybe PE is not part of our graduation, you know, a specific graduation requirement, or it's a pass/fail course instead of a, is that something?
But for students that do well in PE, I think, you know, they'll, maybe the grade would be, if they get an A in PE, it helps them.
Didn't Jim just say though before that they do have the option to take credit?
They have a credit to take credit, no credit.
Credit, no credit.
Yeah.
I don't know that everybody knows that, though, and so it'd be a shame for somebody's GPA to be affected because they just don't like PE.
Well, we have seen that. I mean, in my history as a principal and assistant principal, you see some kids that struggle with dressing for PE years, you know, they don't like to swim in the PE port. I mean, so there are some things like that, but I want to make sure the board is educated on all their options.
Yeah, again, the way I interpret it, and the way it has always been interpreted is that the, since I've been here, is that the, really the waiver during, is during the season, and the PE is in place so that they have an opportunity to study, get homework done, and not be overwhelmed when they get home from a late game. And then they return back to PE after season.
I'm, I'm really confused now. While my three older kids were here, they had the waiver while they were in season the entire semester.
Different day, Laura. That was, we did allow that, and that was, that was when we were kind of using that loophole of like allowing a student to take a course for college admission.
Well, if they, they swam, so that first semester, they just, after they were, you know, they just had the study hall. Even after swimming stopped, swimming stopped November, but they still had the study hall. They weren't forced to go into a gym class for the rest of that semester, which kind of helped them catch up, because they had been in season most of the semester, so it helped them get caught up.
Beth, does the, did the language change in the school code since that time?
No.
So how were we doing it in the past that we were able to do that? Or were we just doing?
I mean.
We did that from 2000 for a long time.
I think we were just doing it.
We were just doing it here, no evil, see no evil.
Well, and I did some research on this. There have been a couple of, I think it was Highland Park, that also figured out actually in January, right before we went into shelter in place, that they had been doing it wrong for years and had to make adjustments. So, yeah, I think their legal counsel brought it to their attention, and then the board had to put it, right, and make it right. So, you know, it happens.
I think West and Deanna were the two main ones that were interested in the semester. And so, and what are your thoughts of what you're hearing tonight? Is there something that we're not considering, or is there anything we're missing, or?
No, I mean, I think that, I mean, the statute on the 11th and 12th grade is pretty clear, right? So I think that answers one question that I had. You know, and I think there's kind of two thoughts, like one is, what is, you know, to Laura's point, what's, what's the expectation of the student athlete? Is that going back to a gym class when they've been performing, assuming they're at a pretty high level as a junior or senior, going back to four, three weeks of a PE class? What's the real physical benefit to that student? I think there's, I think there's probably some debate. I, so that's one thought process, and I certainly would not be in favor of having a student go back into a PE class for those last three weeks for a fall sport or whatever the case is. I think there's a scheduling question, right, which, you know, was raised, how do you predict it? You can't predict that my kid's going to make a varsity sport next year, right? We all assume our kids are going to make the varsity sport, but it probably doesn't happen. So I think you can't really plan for it from a scheduling perspective. It's almost a matter of what's the, what's the percentage of kids that make varsity sports and understand the staffing requirements as a result of that.
I'm not even opposed to say JV. I mean, if they're in a sport, it's still the same amount of practice.
Well, it's limited to grades 11 and 12, so I'm just saying in general.
Well, I think JV can go up to 11.
Sure.
Right? So, I mean, I'm not opposed to including JV, they're training just as hard.
Sure.
Yeah, it's just 11 and 12-year-olds who play a sport.
Right.
Some of the 12th grade.
Right, but I don't think we have to limit it to just varsity.
Yeah, I mean, if you're running up and down on a soccer field 10 miles a day, you've got your energy.
Well, I think, you know, one might be able to, one might be able to argue that participating in the sport five days, six days a week for the nine, 11, or 12 weeks, does that come out to the same thing of taking a PE class three days a week?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. But there's also the option, so it probably doesn't satisfy a three days a week, you're still looking for a waiver reason. What's the right waiver, right? So can the building principal grant a waiver under this for some reason for that remainder duration of the semester? I think whatever Highland Park, I'd be curious to do. I think whatever Highland Park, I'd be curious to do, I'd be curious to know what other schools do with this.
Can we pull that before? If not, can, is that something we could pull maybe for August to bring back some additional information? Maybe just have April or something? Just pull to see like our school's doing for the quarter or semester?
What, what neighboring schools do?
Yeah.
I mean, it also just has to be like an administrative issue, right?
There's, there's flexibility built in this that if the student had to meet a graduation requirement ahead of the pressing needs, the principal could waive them out of PE. I think that's why the school code is written where, when it talks about high school diploma or minimum high school, state requirements for a high school diploma, they do not have a PE requirement as part of the graduation credit. It's just like an additional caveat that you need to be involved in PE.
And if we were to look at the hours, you're looking at three hours a week. An athlete, whether they're JV or varsity, they're practicing two hours minimum. Swimmers are four hours, five times.
That's why I brought up the, I think that would be the only way. I don't know if the, the school code's interpretation though says, hey, three hours a week for a 15-week semester is 45 hours.
Yeah.
And a student participating 10 hours a week in a nine-week season has exceeded those 45 hours, therefore they should be able to take a study hall, right?
Yeah, because the language does say enrolled in physical education, like daily physical education. Like Dana said, the minimum of three days a week. But that would be impossible to do with our schedule.
Right.
I thought there was legislation in the last year or two about different exemptions too.
I think PE became part of that unfunded mandate discussion. And so that's why it's no longer a graduation requirement.
Maybe that, that's what changed that.
It's just encouraged it's three days a week. A lot of schools have not moved, it's just hard to move to that because how do you have kids, how do you schedule something for three days a week, right?
Unless you're on block scheduling.
Block scheduling? Or you do a remote piece where kids turn in evidence that they're doing an independent study in PE? I still think from a scheduling's perspective, it would cause us turmoil. And that even if the board wanted to go to the semester thing and we feel that legal counsel says we have some movement to do it, I still think you're going to have to schedule those kids for PE or those kids are going to have to understand that. If they do not make that team and do not have that PE course scheduled for that semester, they are now delinquent that half a credit. And they're going to have to figure out how to do an extra PE course somewhere before graduation. We do not offer summer school PE, right? So, I mean, that's the other thing, that's a possibility that we have to consider.
My understanding is, is they don't need PE all four years.
It's three and a half.
Three and a half, so they actually have a half semester to toilet.
They take the other half semester as health, that's required. So they don't really have a lot of room to play with that. Kylie, as Assistant Principal, Curriculum Instruction, what's your recommendation? Because we're going to vote on it right now, no, just kidding. I just thought you...
Is this thing on?
Are you really asking me that?
Yeah, any other input that you want to provide that I'm missing here or that could be considered for August?
No, I mean, I think, I think Beth covered it. I think, you know, for us, I think that one of the biggest concerns with, with scheduling because, you know, we're very much trying to accurately project our FTE and not have, you know, gaps and holes and overstaff and, you know, those sorts of things. That would be, you know, my, a big concern for me. But I think...
So if we're talking about a kid, he, he gets cut or gets ineligible. Those are the kids we're talking about.
Gets cut is ineligible.
Or decides they don't want to do it anymore.
Has he gone out for it? The one thing we would definitely have...
So the kid that comes up and says, I'm going to play a sport, and then doesn't because he's trying to get out of PE.
You would definitely not be able to schedule those kids for other classes.
No, you wouldn't.
Right?
Right.
Because that would for sure cause a problem. So this would strictly need to be limited to whether or not the board wants to make it for a semester study hall or the quarter study hall.
And the amount of kids that get cut is a variable to how many go out for the sport or not, right?
Fall sports are probably a little less cut sports. More of our all-in sports, winter sports have, or basketball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball are more in line to cutting.
Baseball.
Baseball's a cut sport. I think girls' volleyball, Dan, that cuts sport? So boys and girls volleyball. So...
Yeah, I think it's really hard to predict the year before.
Yeah, that, that's what's going to be tough. So I mean, at the minimum, you could just say it would be a semester. And I think you'd still have to leave some room for those kids that don't even make the team. So I don't know, you know?
And again, then there's, there's coaches that encourage students to participate in PE, again, just to get that additional workout in.
I think you could run into some trouble too, having to try to have coaches kind of forecast into the future.
Yeah.
I think you're putting your coaches in a sticky spot then because...
Yeah, it could hurt your life.
Or you're letting a kid know, like, you're not making varsity when they're...
Sure, or you're letting them know that they're making it and then you're, you're taking down what they, you, you might minimize what they do between now and then to prepare and get ready and become more conditioned. I think you, I think the coaching end...
Let's look and see what other schools do. And let's look and see if there's a way for, to provide the principal flexibility that if a student wanted to, they could stay in the study hall for a semester, but...
Can I just ask you one quick additional question? The genesis for this idea, where's it primarily coming from? Is this students sort of having brought this issue up, you know, numerous times? Is it parents or...
I think the board brought it up.
No, it's the board actually.
Just the board?
The board has brought it up.
Question?
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to make sense for a kid playing soccer and running up and down the field 10 miles a day and then he has to go back to PE. So it does come kind of out from the kids.
Well, like, and I think the discussion came in, like, the marching band kid after they're done with, when...
Yeah.
If the fourth, if the fourth or fifth home game is done in early October, that student's not getting anywhere near the physical activity of a PE class or a varsity sport. And they're waived out for the entire semester, even though they're...
They're going back to a music class too, so it is...
Right, but they're in that class, right?
Well, if the burden is physical activity, right, then they're not really getting it.
Yeah, do they, I guess, do they march in that field a lot?
We could...
Living next to the field, I know, they're out there in that clock.
You have to stay, you have to stay through halftime if that could...
And they would stay if they stayed the whole game.
Because we could count them.
Three days, sure.
All right, well, we could revisit then. Ladies, it's 9:00 o'clock, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kylie, let's put this on our agenda still, the revisit, just to be sure between you and Beth that we touch it again in August, okay?
Okay, yep.
You want me to come back in August?
Yeah, sure.
Please? You got it.
All right, we're going to go on the floor.
What else do you have to do?
All right, 9:00.
Start writing on the agenda.
Third item on the agenda.
Two hours later.
Page seven. Page seven. He's talking about hour 16, get out of here. Three forms were submitted about school, like, number of grades given third to fourth quarter. Davis Baum wanted to see the superintendent's calls for FY '20. And then from ABC7 requests any information related to student attendance during the current remote learning period. Hector, there was one question submitted about student attendance. Do you have that response?
So, give me one quick second so I can scroll to the bottom of my report. Okay, so the first question, I believe, was how many students of how many days were absent? And it just kind of explained in this report form. So the average daily attendance is calculated by dividing the total number of days present by the total number of days possible. The number of days possible is found by multiplying our total enrollment by the total number of days possible. In this report, for example, for the dates from March 16th through May 21st, there were 42 days possible. You multiply that by, by that enrollment and that gave us 64,531 days possible of enrollment. If you look at days absent, so, and this is remember per group, you know? So one student, for example, perfect attendance, there would be 176 days, okay? So at the, from this time period, our overall attendance was 90.7%. How do we calculate that? You take the number of the total days present, which was 62,159, divided by the total number of days possible, 68,531, and you get the 90.7%. And that's how we were able to calculate our information.
Mr. Mannan, we go back into this next semester, will we be using a similar model if we have to go remote? Or will we wait for additional guidance?
Yeah, I think it's smart to wait for additional guidance. What we used was like a no log-in approach, both the changing landscape and what we know now. I think we potentially can come up with a little bit of a better system to give us a little more clear picture, especially for work and, you know, for the science. But I think what we used was okay because it does give us kids that did log in.
Thank you, Dave, thank you, Hector. Mission statement. All right, let's move on to mission statement. Mr. Jacobs submitted a couple slides. Do we want to address those now, Mr. Jacobs?
And given the time, I'm going to try to make this pretty short and sweet. But I did, you know, in talking with, or, you know, basically the last board meeting where we discussed several versions of the statement that were submitted by all of us, it just seemed to me that it was difficult to make progress. How are we going to decide, you know, which one were better and whatnot? So what I did is basically just list all the statements that were submitted, initially just with a word count and basically where the source was. There was one, one statement that had sort of the support from two board members. If you go to the next slide, so what you're seeing on the screen is basically the existing mission statement. 60 words, I think. But what I started to consider was to basically sort of color code. What, what is it made out of? What does this statement say? And if you go to the next slide, if you apply this, you can sort of see how that 60-word statement answers a broad series of questions from the who, how, why, and so forth. So it's just a visual way of actually sort of saying, what's in there? What are we talking about? Because we're discussing about how to potentially change it. So if you go to the next slide, if I apply that same color coding method to all the ones that were submitted, you basically start to see sort of trends of what they're really, what they are, what they prioritize or what they leave off, what they suggest to, you know, boil it down to. And if you go to the next slide, so just as a, as a way to maybe zoom out a little bit. I mean, a number of us, when we ran for these positions to be on the board, certainly including myself, we said that we believed that a robust discussion about strategic planning was very important. From my involvement with strategic planning, I mean, those two words, strategy basically answers the question of how are you going to do it? And I just included the, the quote from Eisenhower, which I've always loved from the moment I first saw it, that plans are worthless, but planning is everything. And so I've always felt like, yes, we're at this moment, we're, we're discussing about changing the mission statement potentially. But the actual dialogue, other than a Saturday, you know, strategic planning session that we had is, is very cumbersome because we have to do it here and we should do it here, of course. But the reason we're talking about potentially changing this, the mission statement is because it is a foundational statement that's part of strategic planning. So if you go to the next one, on the next slide, I just want to, I sort of thought it might be interesting to show a quick timeline. Because as we all know, we're elected officials for four years at each time with half of us. You know, it's sort of overlapping. And I think what's really important to consider is that when we talk about changing the prior mission statement, it's also, I think we should have prior boards in mind who created it. And we should also keep in mind that all of us are going to be here for various periods of times, but eventually we're all going to be replaced. And so I believe that for a high school like this, some, a certain amount of, not consistency, but sort of even precedent should be considered. And my hope would be that our strategic planning discussions really set a framework that will be also useful to future boards. My point is, the primary audience for a mission statement, in my opinion, is current and future board members. Yes, it would be nice if members of the community could remember it, but that's not going to happen as far as, unless we're like a little tagline. But I think it's really quite important to consider that timeline and the fact that the mission statement potentially answers to multiple questions. So if you go to the next, a, a high school mission statement is inherently complex. If you want to, if you say we need to go to the moon by the end of the decade, which happened, you know, the 60s, that certainly, you know, then you can have a mission statement that's really, really short, just like that, let's go to the moon. And it's sufficiently narrow and you can go very deep with it. But considering the complexity of issues that we deal with, as evidenced by the board meeting tonight, I think it's actually, I can't even remember what I wrote there.
Education today.
Yeah, the idea that the, the focus inherently ought to, ought to be broader, exactly. So if you go to the next one, thank you, Deanna. So the second to last, I'm almost done. I personally feel that the, you know, the, it's not just a personal feeling. I think the, the responsibility of us as board members is to set the conditions by setting policy and so forth, that set the growth conditions of this organization. I mean, you know, it's like we decide in this example, you know, what the coverage is and how much water and all these, you know, it's a complex thing. And if you go to the last one, from personal experience, and other people have written about this in the business world and so forth, if you really want to do this somewhat rigorously, the question about what is timeless, what's sort of on the values level that will never change? And what are the things that are up for discussion that we should actually rigorously challenge about how education might develop? I mean, this, this is just a, a very useful framework to have this discussion. So, sorry for the long-winded statement, but after having looked at all of our proposed statements, I think they're, you know, they're perfectly fine first drafts. But when I look at them now and I compare them to the existing mission statement, I actually think the existing mission statement is just as good, potentially, actually better in my mind than many of the ones submitted. Because especially the ones that get, go to really short statements, my concern is that they end up saying nothing. That, yes, it's a short statement, but they don't really address the how we should set up this environment for growth for everyone. And so I'm reluctant to, or I get, I mean, I don't know what, exactly what the next step might be other than I would suggest that it may be, I would be, I would be a little worried about sort of trying to come to a conclusion so that we can say we changed the mission statement. When I'm not, I'm not convinced that we've had deep enough conversation. And this could happen a couple of months from now or whatever. I'm not saying we should stop the discussion, but I'm not convinced that we are ready to say, y'all, now let's take a vote on these five and the one that gets the most. I would not be in favor of that and would vote accordingly.
You know, when, when Tom brought this up to me, I, I wholly agree. We don't need to change something just for the sake of change, if it's that good. And we have to rethink about it. And what are we trying to accomplish? Is it to get a better, hipper tagline? Or is it to educate the next generation of people to the best of our ability? And to Tom's point of the framework, and I just read a little bit of, of the existing one is, you know, in a safe, orderly, well-equipped environment with nothing else. Addresses that, you know, there's a piece in there that we have to take care of this building is just as important as anything else. Because this building is where they learn. This, where we are today in the Alumni Lounge is a great example of. We spent some money to make it a blended learning room to really go to the next generation of learning. Right? And that's, that's the, I guess, whatever color that is. I'm not good at colors, but.
You know, I would, I would suggest, I mean, I like how you took the original and you color coded it. I think that's fantastic. And then if we took the four that were here and, and you looked at the first one and said, is there anything of the first one that is uniquely important that we might want to add or swap out from the original? So maybe there's a piece or a nugget from each of the new ones that you might want to replace with the original. Because I'm, there's probably a lot of redundancy. You know, and so if you look at two, which is very short, you could say, is there a nugget in two that is not in the original? And then you could take that nugget and put it in the original and say, was there something in the original that's just kind of antedated and just take that out and kind of do it that way? And see if you've gotten something new that, you know, has evolved, you know, from time and you haven't lost what was foundational.
So what are some of our next steps?
I guess, I think if you, if you're, if you're willing, maybe you could take the current one and words method or not, give us a couple of ideas.
So, so I mean, I pulled our notes from when we sat in this room, right, for a long day on mission statement day. I mean, the, the feedback from not just us, but members of the community we had here. The current one felt generic and too long, should be more succinct, need to talk about a diverse world. Language needs to be updated, it's too wordy, some of the language is dated, needs to be revised. So there were some of those notes, and I think the other examples we're trying to, maybe this is what we were saying, is to almost modernize it a little bit. But we did get some tangible feedback from that exercise that I'd hate to lose.
The next steps, whatever the board decides to do, whether it's shorten it or try to combine it or look. I do think we should have a draft or two that go back to the
Yes.
group that volunteered in February. I think there were ten or fifteen community members, three, two or three teachers, the administrators. I think whatever that group is, I think we should show them that that wasn't for nothing. You know, and so I do think there was, that was part of the executive summary by the group that we brought in, that that was the feedback from the data, so.
I think we need to work on it at a meeting. We can't keep saying, we'll do a draft. I think we just need to pull it up on the board there.
Well, I just think the timing, right? Like, we only have one meeting in July and August, we're in the middle of a global pandemic and trying to figure out how to open school.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I don't know.
We got some other priorities.
Just the timing isn't, isn't the best right now. But I don't think it's a bad idea to, I mean, we have five, three people. Somebody else submitted a vote that they could go with five. So should we look at number five? Or should we pull off the other two options or see if there's a way to combine five with the other two options? You know? We should try to figure out, or maybe have someone on the board try to figure out a way to kind of cut the list from what we submitted. Which in the notes I submitted, I believe there were votes for, back to the original page on twenty-one was, Wes had number seven, Gina and Bill had the second part of five. Ramona said she can do six or five. Deanna had three, Tom had four. Like, well, should we, you know, eliminate six and, you know, three people had five? Is there something, is there a way to combine some of these, just to get it down to at least two?
But we're still missing the discussion. What if we said our next board meeting, we would meet a half hour before the board meeting? Anybody who wanted to come a half hour prior?
We just have to post that because it's more than two board members.
Right, that's what I mean. So the next board meeting, if we set a half hour prior to the board meeting, we'll put it up and we'll have that discussion and start to words method.
Time will make. Again, that will be August, so I'll be bringing you how we're gonna go to school in a global pandemic. We're gonna ask any curriculum updates on graduation requirements. It's not gonna be another short meeting.
Right, but that's why.
Whatever happens at that August meeting, I would say we limit it to that first half hour, right? And we can touch on it again in September.
Well, it would be special. It'd be six thirty to seven, so not everybody has to come to that if they don't want to. So any board member who wanted to come and have that discussion. But I think it needs to be discussed, not this, let's submit it, let's combine it, and then we come back and we're still at the standstill. I mean, somebody could lead that, let's put it up and spend a half hour. Maybe we'll get closer, maybe we'll say, hey, this is great. And then when the board meeting starts, you could show, this is how far we got. Should we do more? You want to think about it?
Do we want Mary Ann to schedule that?
Yeah, let's have Mary Ann schedule that.
Are you thinking that the August meeting is gonna be like an eleven PM meeting, though?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, it might be.
I mean, you're talking, you're talking, again, global pandemic.
Could we schedule like a special meeting where one day we, you post a special meeting and we just talk about the mission? And maybe it's an hour and then we're done?
We absolutely could do that.
Yeah. Because I agree with Laura. I think that we do have to have discussion, but I agree with you that, like, global pandemic, big, huge things that we also have to discuss.
You're gonna have the graduation discussion, which I imagine that takes some time. And then you're gonna have some things, who knows what will happen in the next four weeks.
So I mean, I would be open to a separate.
One in August, so if you're gonna schedule a special meeting, I would do it after August, the August board meeting before the September board meeting.
Right.
When we're kind of getting back into school.
And would you guys be open to that?
Yes.
You could also do this at seven thirty in the morning, from seven thirty to eight, and just call it a board committee on the mission statement. So that people who come before, working at this late forces you to talk for a half hour and leave. It's open to the public if they want it, but you don't have to have the quorum.
Yes.
You don't have to do some of the formal things of having Mary Ann there to do, to do that as well.
I think we need to have the conversation. I think it's a great idea to have a special meeting. Not everybody has to come if you can't. But I believe as board members.
I'd call it the mission committee. Let me get back to you with some suggestions. Let me talk to Wes. I think you should do it after the August meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Because I think a lot of attention's gonna be on this pandemic the next couple of weeks, even from your, at your guys' work and at the developments in the state. But it might be better to call this a board committee on the mission statement. And then that, that could meet, because if you call it a special meeting on the board and there's no quorum, you can have discussion, you just can't take any action, I believe, as to which. And there's some of those Robert's rules I gotta check.
Yeah, and so that way, I mean, it, it was great, you put it up there and then you could look at these and you talk about what's important. You talk about the comments. That's all we do for the evening, but it needs to be discussed.
Yeah, and then we could just bring the summary to the, a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right, we don't have to take any action, it's just discussion.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And thank you, Tom, because with all the color, it's a new way of looking at it that I hadn't thought of. That I agree with Laura, like, you know, you kind of have to wrap your head around it, so a different time to discuss it.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah, and I think what, the discussion makes me happy because I was just nervous about rushing into something with, just like, let's pick one. That's.
No, and then we could take each one of these and say, it's, they're the nugget. And then we could take the comments that Deanna said, you know, are we picking something that's current? That was resonating with the people who came to that meeting? But we have to have the discussion. All right.
All right, that's good. So we're gonna get back to, an idea would be later in August. Additional discussions, at this point in the meeting, board education members may request to add an additional discussion item. Where I, my left. President's report, I don't have one, superintendent's report.
Curriculum advisory council, got an update on that. Facilities advisory council, no updates to work, the rougher being done as we speak. Finance advisory council, there was not a second meeting yet because we're just getting the June thirty actuals. We're loaded this afternoon. So the tentative budget's been updated with the June thirtieth actuals. I don't think anybody's had any time to submit any questions on that. So I anticipate board members will submit questions on the budget and the June thirtieth actuals from now for the August meeting. And then we could have a finance committee meeting between August and September. Make any final changes before we bring the agenda for approval in September, or the budget to for approval in September. Does that sound okay?
Right, we should know better how COVID's gonna affect.
Kristen.
Sure.
Okay. Personnel, no update, policy, one oh fours in the packet, press packet one oh four again. I think you guys know where a majority of my attention is focused right now, so we haven't had time to pull together. Policy advisory council, I'll try to do that before April, but definitely before September. Purchase or lease a land. Dr. Straw from the zoo was scheduled to come tonight. We had a verbal agreement on a plan for the fields and the parking. We attended a meeting last week with the Cook County Forest Preserve. And the forest preserve had some concerns with the verbal agreements, the tentative plan. So we're, need to go back to the drawing board and make a few modifications to make sure that we can get the forest preserve support as well. But that is a move in the right direction.
I thought they had identified of those trees, several were ash.
Because of the zoo, the, the number of parking spaces being requested by the zoo, the fields had to be pushed a little close east towards First Avenue, which affected some other trees. So we're trying to figure out if there's some ways to go around that.
Are they ash or alms? Because I thought the.
Those are burr oaks.
They're burr oaks, ice seeds, that's the problem.
That's why some things moved a different, sure, we're working through it. Liability insurance advisory council, Kristen just got some information about our liability insurance cooperatives. So that, we'll try to get that advisory council in before the August board meeting. But we definitely need to probably make a decision by September. If I'm not mistaken, Bill, would that, would that provide us enough time? So that the advisory council would need to meet, bring a recommendation to the board so we can put out, make a decision on how we're gonna pursue our liability insurance. As an abbreviation, I think it's a lot of the other stuff.
All right, we'll go on to the principal's report.
Good evening, board members. Here's my principal's report and how we're winning every week at RB. In the month of June, Dr. Skink is our superintendent and I welcomed all stakeholders to participate in a forum and reflection about race and equity. Thank you to all those that engaged in the dialogue. Our goal was to provide stakeholders an opportunity to share what's on their mind, reflect on local practice as it relates to race and equity, and more importantly, could create solutions for the safety and inclusion of our black students and our entire student body. I'm gonna share a little bit of the executive summary results. We actually held three forums in the month of June, one for students, one for staff, and one for parents. For the students, these were the items that were important to them and their recommendations. The students recommended implicit bias training for all staff members to provide opportunities for black parents and students to speak about their culture to the staff, addressing the N-word when it happens at the school, the inclusion of more black authors in English classes and successful black leaders in every subject area, building and promoting on culture events such as Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and inviting possibly black leaders to speak and inviting possibly historically black colleges to speak as well. And what was really important to the students and to our union is that black lives matter and black lives matter to us. For the parents, they recommended starting a diversity and inclusion committee. They recommended including our law enforcement partners in future conversations about race and equity. They recommended the hiring of qualified black and brown candidates and the inclusion of successful black people in our curriculum. And for the staff, the staff shared their openness to implicit bias training. They shared their openness to listen to black and brown students speak about what's important to them. Staff shared their openness to add to the curriculum to be more inclusive of black and brown influencers. And the staff shared that recruiting black and brown students for AP classes is very important. So that was the executive summary of each group for our race and equity forums. Also, the remote learning survey results, which will address some of the COVID- nineteen plan that we addressed. We know that fourth quarter was an idea. You know, even though we had a plan and most teachers practiced honorably, and I say they did a good job. But of course, we believe in continuous growth and improvement. The survey had three hundred and fifty-one responses, twenty-seven percent students, sixty-seven percent parents, seven percent teachers. And the survey asked three questions about remote learning this past fourth quarter. The first question was, what went well during remote learning? And I just tried to pick just three themes from the survey. Flexible teaching and learning time went well, communication between staff, admin, teachers, and students, and that we are a one-to-one school, one of our strengths. What would be improved, improvement? They want more daily interaction between students and teachers, either in person or via Zoom or Google meets. They want a set schedule, you know, for the students to meet their teachers. Another theme that came out from there was the equitable delivery of assignments. Some teachers gave a little more, some teachers gave a little less. So what is fair for students to do during this global pandemic? Online expectations, this may have been the first time the men ever students were in online learning every day. So how do you learn in an online setting? What is proper etiquette, what is proper interactions? That was important. And then grading, we know we received direction from the state, but clear grading guidelines and feedback was also important. And then some general comments from the responders. Some students were fine, some students were overwhelmed. Some students need to be back in school, even if it's on a limited basis. And then consistent communication, though some people communicated well, communication could have always been improved. So those were some of the key items that I presented today that came from our remote learning survey. This is also a census year, census twenty twenty. Please complete the census form. For more information, it's still on our website, so click on census twenty twenty. And here's some data about the response rate. Currently, right now, as of July fourteenth, according to the census twenty twenty dot gov website, Brookfield is at sixty-four point three percent. Riverside is at seventy-seven point two percent. But I couldn't find anything on the national website for North Riverside or, or, excuse me, or La Grange Park or some of our other communities. So I did not pick any choices. I went to the national website, census twenty twenty dot gov. So those are some of the numbers that I was able to address today and find. Freshman orientation, we are excited to welcome the class of twenty twenty-four on Wednesday, August twelfth, for our annual freshman orientation. On August twelfth, we ask our freshmen to report to the Canelli Athletic Complex at their designated time, the field house in case there is rain. Upon arrival, our student association will separate students into groups of four and no more than twenty-five students per group. We ask our students to wear a mask or face covering the entire length of orientation. Students who have a fever of one hundred point three or higher or exhibiting related COVID symptoms are asked to please stay home. Following the orientation, students should immediately leave campus. To maintain proper social distancing, students will not be allowed to group up or congregant in the building or within outside areas. Parents should refer to the email sent on July tenth in regard to reporting times, which are divided by last names. And guys, please remember, wearing masks is very important. We ask that you wear so you can keep us all safe. Residency, the residency portal is open. We ask our parents and guardians to please visit the following website, www verifi dot r b h s two zero eight dot net to upload the residency documents. Families need to submit the documents in the following category. Category A, driver's license or ID with current address. Category B, recent tax bill, mortgage statement, and current lease that runs into the school year. And category C, three documents needed for any of the following, a gas, electric bill, water bill, phone bill, bank statement. Bills must be dated June or July of this year. Once we receive your doc, once your documents have been submitted, the office will review your information. If approved, families will receive an email with a link to sign up for the in-person residency event. Those days will be August third through the seventh. During the in-person event, families will receive student schedules, take ID pictures, freshman chromebook pickups, and receive their fee statements. If a family is not verified and does not receive a confirmation email, the office will not, um, excuse me, and the office is not able to verify the residence document, we will. not, excuse me, and the office is not able to verify the residence document, we will need further information. Only families that have been verified can proceed with the in-person event. And remember, families, if you guys have any questions about your status, just give us a call, shoot us an email, and we'll give you, and we'll let you know about your status. Families are asked to submit the residency documents by July 24th. Parking passes will be awarded to our junior and senior students who previously applied online. Space is limited, and spots will be approved based on graduating class, distance from campus, and involvement. Approval emails will go out the week of July 20th. Only students who receive an approval email will be allowed to purchase their pass at the in-person residency event. Athletics. Our camps began on July 7th, and they're off to a positive start. Our coaching staff, under the leadership of Mr. Curtin, our AP of athletics have been following all of the IHSA return to play Phase 4 guidelines for safe student participation in our summer camp activities. In these changing times, it is great to see students wearing their masks, entering the building, and really enjoying what they love to do. But remember, our, the safety of our students remains our number one priority, and if anything changes, we'll make sure we inform the community the minute that happens. And parents, remember, if for some reason you're not comfortable sending your kid to the camp, as a parent, you could always have your kid stay home. But just remember, our coaches and our admin are enforcing the return to play Phase 4 guidelines, and so far, across our fingers, things have been working out very well. Just a brief blurb about our general activities. Our band teacher, Mr. Baum, has been facilitating online new member orientation for band members. I've had the pleasure to participate, and they're working out great. He's been posting band techniques videos online and have students, you know, kind of practicing their own safe space. And they've practiced some formation outside without any instrument because we know that, right, COVID-19 is airborne and that could present a problem if students are playing their instruments and all those things. But they are, they are working very hard in preparation, hopefully, to be able to march, you know, on our field come August. And that concludes my principals' report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information for June 2020 as well as the overall fiscal year. I apologize that this report is delayed, but the Township Treasurer closed us out yesterday, so we've been working to get these reports ready for tonight. If you take a look at Board Book, page 34, this is the monthly summary report, and as you can see, the total operating revenue for the month was $506,483, with 50% coming from federal and state reimbursements and 37% coming from our evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. Total operating expenditures for the month were $2,20843, with 71% towards salary and benefits, 8% towards special education tuition, and 8% towards operation and maintenance, particularly supplies and purchase services. I also added on the bottom of this report, since this is the end of the fiscal year, the operating fund balance, after removing the restricted $2.9 million in working cash, and that fund balance is a little over 13 million, as you can see. The operating fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures is 50.4%. This means that the district could operate for approximately six months without additional revenue. I will go into more detail when we ultimately talk about the budget in the upcoming months, but this is incredibly important because, you know, it's very uncertain as to how much revenue we'll be receiving in the fall due to COVID-19 from real estate and property tax, and that certainly is our biggest source of income. And so this, this reserve of six months is incredibly important at a time like this. Moving on to Board Book, page 35, this gives you an overview of the revenues and expenditures and all of the fund balances. And as you can see, we finished this fiscal year with a $7,414 operating fund deficit, which does include the working cash transfer. This is lower than the projected deficit of $452,714, but COVID-19 is really the major reason that the fiscal year 20 ended with a lower-than-anticipated deficit. And that's because when COVID-19 hit, we had already collected a majority of our revenue for the fiscal year because we had collected most of our property tax, and the state continued to make all four payments in terms of our state reimbursements as well as the state, the regular evidence-based state funding. And so a majority of COVID-19's impact resulted in, for this past fiscal year, was to reduce some of the expenditures. Certainly, we did lose some revenue, but the, you know, that wasn't, that wasn't as big of a hit on the district. And so if you take a look at Board Book, page 36, you'll see that the operating fund revenues were 100.3% of budget, so approximately $87,527 additional of what we budgeted for in revenue. And the reason COVID-19 didn't have a huge impact on us in revenues, in addition to the reasons that I already provided, is because we got a lot of other revenue this year that we weren't anticipating, and that includes things I've discussed in prior board meetings, but interest income, IMET reimbursements, the Sea Power Energy Savings Program, as well as the wellness program incentive. So this revenue made up for the lost local revenue, and that was really the biggest hit that we took, was the lost local revenue in student fees, as well as rentals and things of that nature. On Board Book, page 37, you'll see the operating fund expenditures for the year were 98.7% of budget, so we are approximately $358,781 lower than what we had budgeted. And COVID-19 helped us reduce some of the expenditures in areas such as substitutes, copying machines, transportation, certainly athletic, game-related expenses, not only transportation and that, but game workers, officials, things of that nature, and then reduced utility bills for the months of March and April as well. Lastly, two other reports, as always in my report. For your information on Board Book, page 38, that's the statement of revenues and expenditures for the year that the board can presume. They have time for, for June, but it also obviously includes the end of the fiscal year. And then on Board Book, page 55, is the student activity account summary for June. And just keep in mind that negative account balances represent positive fund balances for those accounts. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions that were submitted, I believe, were more on the bills, correct, Kristen?
The majority of the questions were on the bills, correct.
Good job finishing your first year as CFO and Assistant Soup.
Doctor. Thank you.
Okay. We're projected $400,000 out of deficit. You came in at $7,000.
I, I do think, you know, my estimate, had COVID-19 not hit, we probably would have been at a deficit more around 350 is my rough estimate, so we would have been rather close to the projected deficit that we had in our budget.
It's okay. You did good.
I think that's important to note because sometimes we, you know, budgets are estimates.
Projection wasn't off a global pandemic.
You are that, you are good.
Hey, Wes.
All right, consent agenda. Action, I don't see the approval. He's been at-
61.
Thank you.
60, I'm sorry. Need a motion?
Okay, I'll read the motion. The Board of Education, Township High School, District 28, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on June 9th, 2020, opening and close, as presented in the July 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Gina's the second. Roll call.
Mr. Durkha?
Yes.
Mr. Esco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Seear?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll go to old business here. We've got life safety, capital items.
No updates to roofs being installed. Kristen, no change in the status of the project?
No. You're on track.
Draft agreement for engineering services.
Couple of questions were submitted on this, so let me re, provide you a brief summary. 2014 was the last major project we did, when we did the 14 million on the field, the roofs, the tennis courts, all that, and all those items. If you remember, early in my career and with that board, we were still dealing with a lot of leftover punch list items and construction concerns from the 50, $55 million project.
And pool.
And pool. And so, just that overall project, so that's something I inherited because that kind of wrapped up right before I started. And so there were a lot of things that we had to work through. And so when we got into this next big construction project, there was a recommendation of the board, I think maybe even Mr. Jepson, that maybe we hire, not that Frantic couldn't do it, and Frantic still remained our general counsel, but that we hire somebody specifically who specializes in construction litigation, construction law, to help review our CM contract, help review CM at risk, all the different things, to make sure the district had a little more coverage and protection from liability in the event if anything went wrong. And so that's where we used Mr. Berg. And so the last board meeting, when we brought the engineers agreement to the table, there weren't any questions submitted, and I can, I just picked up a little bit of a sense of, you know, maybe not as comfortable reviewing a document like that, right? And so, and in the past, we always had either Mr. Jepson or Mr. Walsh, both of whom are attorneys. Mr. Walsh did a lot of construction contracts for his day-to-day job, and so I wanted to make sure that we had a thorough eye on this and provided enough protection for us once again. And, you know, not being an expert in that, so I contacted Wes and Ramona and asked about using Mr. Berg again, and gave them some of that background, and they thought that was a good idea. And so that's how we came about with using Mr. Berg. Normally, when we get some general contracts information, we'll work with Brian Crowley, who's one of the partners at Frantic, and we tend to work back and forth, but even historically, working with Mr. Crowley, you know, the board members in the past, especially Mr. Walsh, would even find some things that Mr. Crowley didn't find and would, you know, be like, hey, that's a good idea, or hey, I didn't think of that. So not having that resource, I thought we would, it'd be better protection for the district to use a construction attorney on the engineer's agreement. As far as Frank Navatney and Associates, the school board had been working, had worked with Frank Navatney in the past when we did the intergovernmental agreement with Riverside, North Riverside, and, and the school district on the building of the bike trail down First Avenue. And so they had done some work and had dealt with the inner workings of the forest preserve and the county and the zoo and removal of trees and some things like that. And so what we have been using Frank Navatney and Associates, because we started to talk to them about this project a few years ago, we've been paying them on a time and labor basis to help do staking, help do, go to the meetings, provide the drawings, designs, and some of those things. So that's how they came about and using this, using this specific engineer for this project. A red line agreement has been exchanged. I put that in there. I think this thing's already changed three times. They've been going back and forth with red lines. So what I've asked them is, when they think they have reached somewhat of a final agreement, to, we'll have a sit-down between myself, Ms. Smetana, or Dr. Smetana, Mr. Berg, and Navatney and Associates to just make sure we're all on the same page. Originally, the original agreement that I provided you is what they call a design build, a design bid-build project. The fact that we're working directly with the engineer, we have eliminated some of the architect fees from this project because it's basically the sports fields and then parking and storm detention, so it's really more of an engineering project. So the idea was, I tried to see if Mr. Berg can do something where it was a design and build agreement. I know Mr. Jacobs will kind of maybe be able, but design and build would then put a little more liability on the engineer. And so Navatney and Associates don't have, don't do those types of agreements at this time, and our, our legal counsel thought that was okay. We are just putting some specific, they are in agreement to put in some more specific language in the design bid-build project to make sure there's some additional protections for the district. The fact that we're going back to the drawing board a little bit to try to amend the plan that we thought we had an agreement on, I think this bought us a little more time. This was kind of rising to the front of the agreement, to the front of the agenda in the, in the event that the forest preserve was okay and we were going to have to move some things forward with the county and the board and some of those things. But I think we've been pumping the brakes a little bit, so I'll continue to leave this on the agenda, and I'll continue to bring updates to the board as they come in. But I don't see this being ready for approval till probably August. Okay?
So just confirming, we've retained Eric Berg already. He's, he's performed work on this agreement.
And just one quick, I mean, one of the reasons I asked about the engineer is that while yes, this is, you know, a parking lot is very different than a building or something like that, but the best practices in terms of storm detention, rainwater infiltration, I mean, there's a lot to it. And my question was more like, in, in the process of how, when this becomes, you know, when they start planning, I think it is very important that we take a look at how is this considered in a, in a holistic, environmentally sound way.
Sure.
That's my main concern.
Okay. And just so everybody is aware, Frank Navatney and Associates does a lot of this civil engineering for all of the surrounding municipalities. So they are, they specialize in road construction, storm detention, parking lots, parks and rocks. They have done an athletic complex at Revis High School, and similar to what we're trying to pull off, so they have some school experience as well, but their main thing is municipality I-DOT and those types of projects. So they're very, very familiar with MWRD and the storm mitigation process.
Any thoughts or questions, everyone?
Liability insurance, Kristen?
I updated our existing document with some new information, which is in the board packet, which is in, in red, as I've done in the last board meeting. All of the other cooperatives that I was looking into, the board had asked me previously to look into other cooperatives that are available at the state, and I did confirm the last one is also run by Gallagher. And so it, it seems like if we're going to go with a co-op, one of the, the two best options are probably the ones that I presented initially, click or skip, but we do have the other option as well that the subcommittee or sub-advisory council will need to consider. Additionally, I wanted to notify the board that I did find out from ISIC, which is our current liability insurance, that they will not be going out to the market for renewal. Their initial plan was possibly going out and presenting that to the, to the co-op to see what they wanted to do in regards to the next year. The co-op has decided that that's probably not the best use of time, and so it, I don't see how the co-op would unfold at this point. We haven't had a meeting. That's the latest update. So we will need to make a decision in the next two months, as Dr. Skink has previously said, to decide and get some direction from the board as to which option we will be going with.
Kristen, there was a thing that came out today to the superintendents. I don't know if you saw it.
I did. I, so there was a, a thing that was sent to the superintendents from our legal counsel about whether or not COVID, is that, is this what you were talking about?
Yeah, that the superintendents should be checking with their cooperatives, because there have been some cooperatives that said that we need to check liability coverage during-
Correct. So I've already emailed, I've already emailed our cooperative. They are confirming that they both, they believe that we would be covered if somebody were to file a claim in regards to COVID or lawsuit on behalf of the district. And then I also reached out to the two new co-ops that we would potentially join. I haven't reached out to Alliant yet, and Click, I believe, is the district, is the co-op that the, our legal counsel was referring to, and so we would not be covered. I have yet to hear back from Skip, the other co-op, but again, this was at like 6:30 tonight.
I think that's important as we move forward. Do you anticipate bringing the insurance advisory council together before August? Or do you anticipate that being, I mean, we should probably get with Mr. Durkha and finalize our plan and then make, make sure we can arrange it with this, Zales' schedule?
Yeah, I think certainly, even if we don't make a final decision, but I have some direction, I can, like, even if we just pick one of the two cooperatives, then I can get a quote from that cooperative, and then we can look at Alliant, or any direction from the board would help. Right now, I cannot get a quote from both cooperatives as they won't compete against one another. So some direction from the board, I think, would be helpful in that regard.
Direction from the board or advisory council?
Sorry, the sub-advisory council. Sorry, the sub-advisory council.
There we go. All right. All right. Well, we should either do a Zoom then or a meeting with them before the August meeting.
Correct.
So we could update the board on what we're pursuing.
I, I would be surprised if there were not exclusions. I don't know if you're seeing bill, but I'm seeing exclusions everywhere.
Yeah, pretty much every policy that I've looked at, you know, for all different types of businesses, have exclusions, just basic virus exclusions that have been embedded in these policies going back to the SARS outbreak. So, you know, if it's not on policies currently, which if it isn't, it's going to be very rare, you know, it will be on the upcoming renewal. Because insurance companies, they don't want to pay out defense costs for this. And I don't know how all this stuff ties into the immunity act. You know, if we have in-class learning, somebody gets exposed, you know, leave that to the legal council for direction on that.
I think that's part of the reason that they're having us do this resolution that's on there. Because there was something, one of the, the toward immunity, showing that we're, we're trying to do this, formalize plan approved by the board, in line with, to the best of our ability within the governor's recommendations.
Federal guidelines, perhaps. Yeah, we, we still live in, obviously, the most, you know, very plaintiff-friendly county and state. So what does that mean? I don't know. You know, we, we just have to, a lot of these things are out of our control. I don't think there's going to be any virus coverage that you can buy on its own. It's almost like a sure, a sure loss. Insurance companies don't know how to price it or underwrite it yet. It just hasn't, there's not enough data available yet to be able to price it. So.
I will certainly forward all three responses that I received to the sub-advisory council so that they can see them and see the different approaches and responses that the three prospective.
Are they long?
Insurance responses.
I was just going to say combine them into one PDF and then.
Sure, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten them all yet.
Okay, if you put on a text box, click, skip. Okay? So we're sending them just one document. We're not piecemealing it to them. Okay, Wes?
Tentative budget.
All right. So the approved tentative budget for fiscal year '21 has been updated with June 30th actuals as of about 6:00 PM tonight and was uploaded into your board packet. So before the August meeting, I will evaluate the June 30th actuals with Dr. Skinkis and make any necessary changes. This is when we really scrub the budget. Now that we know more about the possible opening of school, we'll also have more about, you know, sports and things of that nature, you know, the budget will be adjusted. For example, if we're not going to run fall sports, then we could reduce the transportation costs and other things associated with that. So the budget, now that we have the June 30th actuals, we'll start to see some movement and adjustments on those things. I have not had time to look at the June 30th actuals yet. As Dr. Skinkis said, we'll also meet with the finance advisory council and review those changes, as well as any changes they would like to make. And then, as always, the tentative budget continues to be on display, available for public review on the district's website. And then the final fiscal year '21 budget will be presented to the board for approval at the business meeting in September.
So we're anticipating finance advisory between August and September?
That would be the most productive.
Between the August meeting and the September meeting?
That would be the most productive, I think.
Okay.
All right. And board policy updates?
I don't think there's any action on this tonight. The focus for this meeting was supposed to be on 6310 and 7260, which is around the PE waivers and the few specific rad requirements like fine art survey and global area studies. And I think, I think there's still more discussion to be had. We did not dive into 220 or 230, so I would say we just table that as agenda.
Okay, agree. New business, payment of bills?
There were several questions submitted. The first question was a, a general question that kind of hit throughout a variety of different pages on the bills. And it was in regards to our outplace students during the remote learning period. We did continue to pay tuition as this, the therapeutic day schools were continuing to provide remote education and supports to the students to meet their IEP minutes as, to the best of their ability in that, in that condition. The various schools were in contact with the previous special education director regarding the services provided, as she was their individual case managers for each of those students. And so I don't have any additional specific data regarding individual student engagement levels at those particular schools, but I do know that they continue to provide services remotely for those students. And then on top of that, we also had our students that were continuing to be placed at our residential placements. And so we have tuition for those students as well. On board book page 169, there was a question about alcohol sanitizer for $2,516. This charge is due to the increase in supply for COVID. And we want to make sure that there's hand sanitizer in every space, including classrooms. And so until we pick an in-person instruction model, it's hard to have the most accurate estimate for custodial supplies. We already have supplies on hand to start the school year. We have, each classroom will have a big container of sanitizing wipes, as well as hand sanitizer. We have over 2,000 disposable masks and we're in the process of ordering more. We have face shields for staff that choose to wear them on top of their masks. And I've submitted the survey to ISB in regards to securing the cloth masks for all students, as well as all faculty and staff. And those should be coming in at the end of July. And those are free, provided to the state. We also, Dave Mannan has also worked hard to submit a grant to the township of Riverside to secure some other things, such as thermometers to take students' temperatures as they walk in the door. I have tentatively added an additional $15,000 to custodial supplies. I plan to review that with Joel as the school year gets closer to determine whether or not we need to increase that more or not. The other question associated with this, I'm sorry, was that we will, we don't anticipate spending any additional money for custodial staff at this time. Joel and I have worked, depending on which model we choose, we'll just be shifting their staff around to accommodate the extra cleaning, depending on, again, which model we ultimately go with. On page, board book page 170, there were, in board book page, I, sorry, my page is numbered. I didn't, my pages changed. I didn't correct the second one. But it's in regards to electricity, commed, and then IGS energy and why there were two bills. So commed is the delivery of electricity, but IGS is the supplier. And so we did see a reduction in the first two months, but this bill, there was no reduction because it covers May and June. And at that point, the building was open and we were having to operate as normal with the administrators in, as well as some additional staff. Board book page 172, the Displanes Valley region DVR local share of $20,000. Approximately, Displanes Valley region is a consortium of school districts that help manage and meet the requirements of the Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, which is a federal grant, as well as the Career and Technical Education Improvement, or CTEI, which is a state grant. So they make sure we meet all the requirements and they also provide a lot of assistance with student career planning for schools, program of study development, and really looking at how schools can enhance their career programming, as well as teacher professional development. Board book page 175, I believe, is Ladsy Transportation. So Ladsy had a, a contract with Grand Prairie for the school year. And so due to COVID-19, they worked on negotiating that contract and modifying it so that we would have to pay 80% of a typical bill. And then in addition to that, to reduce the overall cost increase for next year from 5%, which was initially in the contract, to 3%. All schools that have a regular daily bus contract were in the same situation and ended up paying anywhere from 80 to 85% of the normal monthly cost. That was a big topic of conversation for about a month amongst business managers and schools. We don't have this issue because we don't provide daily busing and our contract looks very different for athletics. And so that's why we continue to pay transportation through Ladsy. The state has said we will get reimbursed for those transportation costs, even though they were not necessarily always transporting students. But that reimbursement will come in fiscal year '21. Questions submitted on board book page 181, 183, 185, and 197, all these questions were in regards to a previous retirement insurance option payment of $3,000. So we have two people this year that are receiving partial payments because they age out. And then the other two people, one ends in 2021, and then the other ages out in 2022. And then that concludes kind of phasing out that retirement insurance option.
It goes back to like 2013, or actually even before, I think it's 28 to 20, 2008 to 2013 contract was the last year that was offered.
I believe so, yes. And then the last question, there were lots of board members that submitted questions on board page 187, proviso township, school treasurer. So the township treasurer hired two consultants to help with the transition to our new software, Infinite Visions, because they were, and, and keep in mind, they were also transitioning. So they, we had two different consultants and they divided the cost among the districts and then billed the districts. So Kathy Conroy works directly with the company, Infinite Visions, and she's the Infinite Visions guru. And she led all of the, what used to be in-person, and then we moved online, training last fiscal year, as well as this fiscal year. So most recently, she did a lot of work in helping us roll over into the new fiscal year, including payroll for the new fiscal year. Kelly's Consulting Services is a person who's been with the township treasurer for the entire year. They hired her so that she provided daily support in the transition. So Kathy Conroy came in and did this big, you know, week-long training here and then, you know, a month later came in and did another week-long training. But Kelly was there every day working with the township treasurer, as well as individual districts, and supports us as needed, as well as constantly sharing out proactive reminders like, this is the time you need to do this and here are the directions. She, her contract is up with the township treasurer this past fiscal year, as of June 30th. So these were the last invoices that we should be receiving. The township treasurer is delayed, so they're, I'm not 100% certain, there might not be one more coming. So I don't have their addresses or their websites, as the township treasurer hired them and they just billed us individually. And then for Kelly Consulting, the invoices change based on the amount of work that was completed that month, is how, how she is getting paid. And so number 24 signifies the 24th invoice that we have received on behalf of her. And I believe that answers all the questions in regards to the bills.
Any further discussion?
Can I read the motion? The Board of Education Township High School District 20, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of the bills as presented in the July 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Thank you, Tam. And is a roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Zales?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right. COVID-19 reopening plan of resolution.
Again, first read. This was presented by our attorneys at Francic. This, this provides some additional coverage for the board, as well as the, the school district. What we'll do is at the August 11th meeting, we will drop in the plan and the remote plan so that we can take action on it.
All right. Marriage for close, personnel sale.
Press plus.
Oh, press plus.
Just the first read.
I jumped right track.
Pull together. Laura's already coming in on one day to do curriculum advisory, so I'll try to do it before the August 11th. If not, this will have to wait till September.
Take advantage of my day hours. I only work throughout the night.
All right. First read. Now marriage for close. Personnel, sale or lease of property, collective negotiation, and school safety.
You said personnel, correct.
Personnel.
Personnel, yes. This is another opportunity for visitor's statement. Okay, do I have to reread this?
No.
Good.
Dave, I'll take my end of it to 30 seconds.
Yeah, no, it's short. I know you can't believe it, but yeah, sure. Anyway, first of all, thank you so much. And I want to thank Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas and his administrative team. I want to thank everybody on the COVID committee. I, I can't believe the job that it is. And so I just want to thank you for trying to create the best plan possible for the return of school next month. As Dr. Skinkis said, my phone's been blowing up for the last 24 hours. I've had more emails, texts, calls from the survey. And Ms. Zales said it, you know, we need to make sure that we're over-communicating. Everybody that contacted me, they were under the impression those are the three choices. Because it never said that in the survey. It never said that there was never a fourth thing for comments or feedback. So when I heard you mention that, Dr. Skinkis, two hours ago, I was, I was kind of shocked because I got the survey and I was under the impression that these were the three plans that the committee was recommending. So all I would do is, as Ms. Zales said, I would just really, really encourage the committee and Dr. Skinkis especially, and Dr. Freitas, that, that people know that this is, this is fluid, that this is, these are the three that we're at right now. But we're taking your ideas and your thoughts and your concerns and we're molding it. Because I, that was definitely not clear. And that's why my, my phone blew up today. I don't think I've ever gotten more phone calls and texts and emails about something in a long time like that. So, and then the last thing, coming as, as your resident biologist, you know, who's been in the building 30 years and knows quite a lot about microbiology, several people mentioned it to me and, and again, and I saw it too. All those scenarios had all 1,600-plus kids in the building every day, whether it was from nine till three, or if it was periods one through four, every kid, or if it's the split, the split, you know, A through M.
I know you can't believe it, but yeah, it's short. Anyway, first of all, thank you so much, and I want to thank Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Freitas and his administrative team. I want to thank everybody on the COVID committee. I can't believe the job that it is, and so I just want to thank you for trying to create the best plan possible for the return of school next month. As Dr. Skinkis said, my phone's been blown up for the last 24 hours. I've had more emails, texts, calls from the survey. And Ms. Salas said it, you know, we need to make sure that we're over-communicating. Everybody that contacted me, they were under the impression those are the three choices. Because it never said that in the survey, it never said that there was never a fourth thing for comments or feedback. So when I heard you mention that, Dr. Skinkis, two hours ago, I was, I was kind of shocked because I got the survey, and I was under the impression that these were the three plans that the committee was recommending. So all I would do is, as Ms. Salas said, I would just really, really encourage the committee and Dr. Skinkis especially, and Dr. Freitas, that people know that this is, this is fluid, that this is, these are the three that we're at right now, but we're taking your ideas and your thoughts and your concerns, and we're molding it. Because I, that was definitely not clear, and that's why my phone blew up today. I don't think I've ever gotten more phone calls and texts and emails about something in a long time like that. So, and then the last thing, coming as your resident biologist, you know, who's been in the building 30 years and knows quite a lot about microbiology, several people mentioned it to me, and again, and I saw it too. All those scenarios had all 1,600-plus kids in the building every day, whether it was from 9 till 3, or if it was periods 1 through 4, every kid, or if it's the split, the split, you know, A through M, and then the L through Z, whatever. But all kids are going to be in the building at some point during the day. And if we're trying to minimize the risk to our students, you know, we need to take a look at that scenario. So, but again, I want to thank Dr. Skinkis, I want to thank Dr. Freitas and everybody because I can't imagine what this has been on all of you. I know the anxiety I feel coming back to school. I know the anxiety that other people feel and the parents feel and students feel. So I just want to thank you because it's, there's, you're not, like you said, you're not going to make everybody happy. There's going to be people that are not going to be happy with whatever the committee decides. So thank you again.
Good evening. Thanks, David, I appreciate it. Discussion items and requested?
Is this, I guess, I don't know if this is the right time or what, but...
You're talking about consideration for future items?
Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's next, consideration for future items?
Yes, that's what I'm... If we're talking equity, then something that has not come up in any of the stakeholder groups that I believe is maybe next to hiring staff from diverse back, more diverse backgrounds, would be standards-based reporting. So the way in which we...
Standards-based grading?
Well, but it's not, it's grading, reporting, I mean...
How about standard-based practices?
Standard-based practices, there you go.
So to the noneducators, what is that?
So the standard, Mr. Martin, you want to throw one out that you have? I can't think of any off the top of my head.
It just more or less, instead of, it eliminates the whole pass/fail, like A, B, C, more or less, it says like, it's more skill-based. So you...
Students will add three digit numbers.
Skills and kids don't pass that class so they can demonstrate proficiency at those skills.
So no grading? You'll get an explanation on, there'd be categories of explanations on what should be achieved, and they'll either be proficient, or meeting...
Kind of came out a little bit in the remote learning when we were allowing kids to retake stuff and redo stuff to show, demonstrate mastery. And if you think the graduation requirement discussion will be long, I think this will be... But I would save this again till probably after August and probably after the budget in September because this is going to be one that I think you'll get some...
We'll do this in November.
You'll get some pushback from the teachers.
Well, if you, the RBA today wrote a statement that said that they want to be, they want to be equitable and have more equitable practices. And in my opinion, that is next to hiring more diverse staff. That is the way to be, that is a huge, well, I listened to a woman the other day on NPR talk about, she says she's an anti-racist educator. And everything that she talked about are the things, are the way that we talk about things where I work around the way that we evaluate student progress, around, around standards-based practices. I thought that she was going to say something about standards-based practices, but she was talking about being an anti-racist educator. Mission High School in San Francisco, you can look it up on NPR. So, I mean, if you're interested, and if you want, I mean, Gina and I can bring more articles about what standards-based reporting is.
One of the things that Dr. Freitas had said in his report is actually, I think we need to talk about consideration of items, is what is the next step, right? And I think what you're describing on that list of items that came up from the different focus groups, maybe it's not to start a long discussion here, maybe it is a committee, you know, an equity and diversity committee that teases through some of the curriculum challenges, not to mention the administrative building, all the other challenges. And I think taking the discussion and bringing it to action, we need some assistance, right? We need people and their ideas on that.
I would say that that's a good recommendation, like, you could bring that up at the curriculum council?
Sure.
And say like, hey, you know, this, one of the things Dr. Freitas is working on with Kylie to bring back to me is to find some models of implicit bias training. And so, and as we talked about, even with the people on the committee like that, might be something that if we end up going remotely in a month or two, that might not be something we can carry out fully this year. And then, so it's something we're going to have to, the staff's committed to taking on the long journey, we're committed to taking on the learning journey, and this would be something that will...
This is a five-year, it, it studies show that it takes five years to implement with fidelity. So it is a heavy lift. It's not something that you sit here, like, it's not something that I say tonight, you know what, tomorrow we're going to start standards-based practices. No, there's a lot of professional development, there's a lot of PLC work that the teachers have to do. Dr. Freitas and his team have to be, you know, on point. And, and so there's a lot that would have to go on, and it takes five, a good rollout takes five years. So it's not, it's not something that, again, that I say, oh, yeah, let's do that, that sounds fun.
Consideration as a future agenda item then? And we should just bring it up at the Advisory Council first?
Sure.
Yeah, and we also want to know, is there interest among our instructional coaches for this? Because this would be a paradigm shift in how students are graded.
This is a huge thing that I wouldn't put on the agenda for the board. This time, I think it's something that we start with the curriculum advisory, and then it goes to, I think Deanna's recommendation of having the administration kind of lead this, right? Because if this comes out through our, a subcommittee that we talked about putting together, then, you know, it would be really good if that subcommittee was leading the charge, not looking at it from the board down.
Well, no, and I think, I absolutely need to do some education on this myself, and you have articles, and I'll, I can Google. But, but I think there's probably multiple levers that we should be looking at. And so I think I'm looking for more of a committee approach for big picture, and obviously the expertise on the curriculum group to really get into the weeds on this.
I think it would come organically out of a conversation about equity. It would just organically come out of that conversation. And it is, it is a multi-year process, but it is also best practice.
It's a paradigm shift?
It's a huge paradigm shift.
You'd have to have the entire staff be on board?
It's a huge paradigm shift.
Huge. It's a huge paradigm shift that most districts have taken.
And, and we were just trying to implement nanos, millimeters of it throughout even the fourth quarter under the governor's direction. We got some resistance.
And parents aren't going to see A, B, C, or D, you know, you're not going to... Well, yeah, there's a huge fair education piece as well.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, just throwing it out there, but...
That's interesting.
It's a big throw-out.
I know, it's funny, you know. Why not after a four-hour meeting?
Yeah. Put it out in the bin. All right, Wes. I like the idea of putting it through a subcommittee, that's fine.
I like, that's a good idea.
Close session.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Board of Education Township High School District 2, Cook County, Illinois enters close session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, sale or lease of real property, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second. Mary Ann?
Who's second?
Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Jacobs, sorry.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Strusco?
Laura? Oh, yes. Did it sound like we all?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Bring that devil.
Oh, I got it. Oh.